Meeting of the March 17th meeting of the Clinton Township Board to Order. Ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day. The fact that you are all here with us shows that you're not either Irish or you're not partiers, so we appreciate you being with us tonight. Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Trustee Wade.
Here.
Trustee Metuzak.
Here.
Trustee Kress.
Present.
Supervisor Gilliam.
Here.
Trustee King.
Present.
Treasurer Iello.
Present.
Clerk Meltzer, here.
Okay. All right, everyone in attendance, Madam Clerk, I would like to make a motion that we remove from the agenda tonight, item number 24 and 25.
I'll support that.
Quick question. Can we also add to that motion, well, two things. One, can we remove, can we vote on 24 and 25 separately?
Yes.
And then also, can we move item 11 to item, after item 5?
Okay, so first motion is removal of 24 and 25. We'll make that first, and we'll have a roll call.
So, I wanted to vote on them separately, though, 24 and 25. Can we vote on it separately?
So, you're asking for a separation?
Yes.
Separation's always in order.
Yes.
Okay. Madam trustee, Metuzak, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call on removal of item number 24.
And that item 24 is to, just to make sure, because we've had some adjustments on the agenda, is resume essential services hearing ITC involving high voltage poles and wires, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, let me write that down. And, all right, so who made a motion for that? Was it?
I made the motion, supported by trustee Metuzak.
Okay. Okay, Supervisor Gilliam.
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak.
Yes.
Trustee Wade.
Yes.
Trustee Kress.
No.
Trustee King.
Yes.
Treasurer Iello.
No.
Clerk Meltzer, no. Motion passes.
Okay, removal of item number 25. Roll call.
Okay. Uh, we need a motion?
We need a motion.
We already made the motion, they just separated it, so...
Oh, just to separate, and you're, okay, all right. Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
No.
Uh, okay, one second. Trustee Kress?
No.
Trustee King?
Yes.
No.
Wait, yes.
This item is...
Wait a minute, I'm not done yet, you know, one second. I have to finish...
There's a question of whether or not this motion's in order, though, based on the previous vote and based on where we are in these proceedings.
Well, we're in the middle of a vote.
Okay.
Um, okay, and this 25 is to remove, so yes, to remove.
Okay, well, that's removed.
So, we're good, so motion passes to re...
To remove, okay. And then, Madam Clerk, you want a motion to move item number 11 to 5A.
Yes, please.
And so, you're making that motion?
Yes.
And supported by, all support? Roll call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Uh, what's my spot here? Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, I made the motion. Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, and then I would like a motion to, or I'll be making a motion to remove item number 23 from the agenda as well.
Support.
Moved and supported, roll call, please.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
No.
Uh, trustee Kress?
No.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Uh, treasurer Iello?
No.
Clerk Meltzer, no. Motion passes.
Motion passes?
Yes.
Motion fails.
What, oh, to remove, that was to remove, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, motion fails to...
So, it stays on.
To remove?
Yeah.
So, okay, then I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So, moved.
Moved by trustee Metuzak, supported by...
All support.
Or King.
Trustee King.
Mm-hmm.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
No.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
I'm sorry.
This is for the whole, the whole, the agenda is printed.
As amended.
So, you would say treasurer Iello, what the, those are changes?
No.
Okay, clerk Meltzer, no. So, motion passes, four to three.
Okay. All right, and prior to getting into item number one, which is the consent agenda, trustee Kress is asked for a public service announcement on what subject matter?
Uh, planning commission.
Okay.
Um, I had two different candidates approach me for planning commission, Ionia Means and Vito Strolus. I'd like them to be considered for the openings in the planning commission, and I'll be certain that they get to the appropriate paperwork, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number one, consent agenda, three items. Is there a motion?
So, moved.
Support.
Moved by clerk Meltzer, supported by trustee Metuzak. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number two, subrecipient agreement with McRest for use of CDBG funds.
Clinton Township receives community development block grant funds each year $607,341 in 2024. Each year, a percentage of these funds, a maximum of 15%, are made available for public services ranging from provision of shelter to the homeless to recreation programming benefiting low to moderate income youth. One of the agencies approved by this board in the 2024-25 program year was McRest. They received an award of $5,000 for the purpose of providing shelter to the homeless, individuals, and/or families whose last address was in Clinton Township. With the level of funding, McRest has historically provided approximately 80 nights of overnight stays to the homeless. It is staff's request that the board approve this subrecipient agreement with McRest, and with its approval, staff will have the agreement executed by Clinton Township and subrecipient representatives. The township will ultimately reimburse the subrecipient as the agreed-upon services are provided.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by trustee Metuzak, supported by clerk Meltzer. Any further discussion? I'll, excuse me, a roll call.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number three, same thing, subrecipient agreement with the interfaith volunteer caregivers for CDBG funds.
Oops. This is the same letter, but one of the agencies approved by this board in the 24-25 program year was interfaith volunteer caregivers. They received an award of $5,000 for the purpose of providing services to low to moderate income senior citizen households in the form of minor chores requested by the homeowner. With the level of funding, IVC can provide this service to approximately 42 households in the township. It is staff's request that the board approve this subrecipient agreement with IVC, and with its approval, staff will have the agreement executed by Clinton Township and subrecipient representatives. The township will ultimately reimburse the subrecipient as the agreed-upon services are provided.
Move approval.
Moved and supported by, supported by treasurer Iello, moved by trustee Metuzak. Uh, trustee Metuzak.
I just want to, I don't know, I guess it's a public service announcement. The interfaith caregivers is a wonderful organization, but they run on volunteers, and they are constantly looking for volunteers to help with house cleaning, to help with yard work, to help with minor home repairs. They can't provide their services unless people volunteer to help out in this, and we're coming into spring. We have a lot of folks in the community that are going to need help with yard work, that are going to need help cleaning up a little bit, maybe cleaning out the garage. The folks who receive the services tend to be elderly or handicapped in some way, so I really encourage anyone who can to volunteer a few hours to interfaith caregivers and to help them succeed in helping folks in our community. So, I hope people will take the opportunity to volunteer.
Trustee, I can say that that is a great public service announcement. While we're on the subject of approving the interfaith volunteer caregivers, I can tell you, last year, I ran into a resident who needed a rail at his condo. He had the funds to, in order to purchase the railing, he needed help putting it in. I contacted the interfaith volunteer caregivers, they came out, installed the rail, and he was as pleased as he could be to receive the help, and full circle, turns out, this gentleman also played Santa Claus at the daycare my kids went to. So, it was kind of a very neat thing, and it was nice to see it come full circle. So, with that, we'll need a roll call.
Uh, trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay, item number four, approval of temporary structure at 24800 William Rosso Highway.
My name is Michael Hamby, and I'm a store manager at Ben and Adi Pool and Spa location in downtown Utica. I am writing today to inquire about being able to present a proposal to the board for a temporary structure to be used at our upcoming new location located at 24800 William P. Rosso Highway in Clinton Township. The first occurrence of the tent sale would be the weekend of April 24th to this 27th. This also coincides with our grand opening. We also have two more events planned in June, June 5th to the 9th, and September 18th to the 22nd. The temporary structure would be a 40-foot round inflatable sail tent meant to house six to 10 hot tubs during a weekend-long sale. The tent's tarp would be a blue and white color scale with our logo along the verbiage, with the verbiage "Hot Tub Swim Spa and Factory Sale." The eight supporting legs are black in color, and each one connects to the tarp at the base. The base is also weighed down by multiple 40-pound sandbags at each leg. We do these types of events three times a year at our Utica's location, so we, so to set up, we would be done in-house and overseen by either myself, the owner, or specifically, especially trained foreman. Set up at the Clinton Township location would typically be middle of the day, Thursday or early Friday, depending on allowances from the city. Tear-down would likely have to be at the end of day Monday or early Tuesdays, we would have to remove the products, the hot tubs, from the parking lot and return them to storage in Utica beforehand. Along with this letter, I will attach a to-scale drawing of the tent's proposed location, which is the parking lot directly outside the west entrance to the store's location. If there are any questions, my email is attached, and I will put the rest of my contact information in email form. Thank you for taking the time to consider our proposal. Mitchell Hamby, store manager for Ben and Adi Pools in Utica.
Good.
And he's here, he is here.
I'll note that our building department director is in the audience for questions. Ms. Meltzer, I think there were some conditions that we talked about in the staff meeting.
Uh, yeah, so I actually read the additional, the additional dates, that they did, he did speak with our building director and got approval, that would be, we'd be approving June 5th to the 9th and September 18th to the 22nd, and it's possible that those dates could change depending on weather, obviously, that's a condition as well, but it's around that timeframe, and speaking with our director, he's here, Barry Miller, he stated that he would be willing to work with them as well.
Yeah, I spoke with the applicant, I talked to Mitch and also Jacob Ben and Adi. They are aware of what we're looking for. I'm comfortable, as long as the board is, with allowing them to flex the dates. I mean, weather-dependent, you can't plan for what tomorrow's going to bring, let alone three months from now. Rather than have him come back to this board for each one, I'd prefer, and I'm sure they would prefer not to have to come back each time, I would issue him one permit for a temporary structure. It would allow him to have all three events. We would, we would witness the install and the, and after it's gone, after it's taken down each time.
Okay. There currently isn't a certificate of occupancy yet, right?
They're in process.
In process?
Yeah, they're moving along nicely.
Okay.
They've complied with all inspection requests, and they're doing a fine job. They'll be, they should be fine by their date. That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. I was about to ask if there's anybody from Ben and Adi Pools, and then I looked out in the audience, and I see a shirt with a logo on there. So, sir, would you like to step forward and tell us about your new location here in Clinton Township?
Yes, well, actually, thank you for having me, appreciate it.
Name and, name and address voluntary, but for the record.
Uh, let me see, my name is Mitchell Hamby, the address, 24900 William P. Rosso Highway. Uh, I've worked at the Utica location for eight, nine years now. I'll be the one basically overseeing the installation of the tent. I've done it over 30 times in my life before. Uh, it's basically a giant octopus, eight legs, kind of going all the way around, plenty of air to go through, no fire hazards, plenty safe, anyone can get around it. In the worst-case scenario, something did go down, it would be trivial how much damage would happen, frankly. We would have it up ideally early Thursday, so we could have everything set, ready to go, so Friday, we could just turn on the lights, our salesmen could do their thing. Uh, Sunday, we're open until 4:00, starting at 10:00. Ideally, we'd like to have our salesman go home at the end of the day. Monday, we start tearing it down, we would remove the hot tubs from the location, we would trail them back over to our warehouse in Utica, get those down, deflate the tent, let the air get out of the tent, and frankly, from there, it probably takes 45 minutes to put away. It's not bad at all.
And there was some discussion about the need for a approval from the church.
Oh, yes, I do have that with me today.
Okay.
Yes.
If you could provide that to the clerk.
Yes.
Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second that.
With the conditions, or...
Yes, with the conditions.
As noted by clerk Meltzer?
I'll go ahead and add that, thank you.
Great violation.
Matthew, we appreciate you being here.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so we have a motion by treasurer Iello, supported by clerk Meltzer. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number five, adopt and publish ordinance, repealing ordinance 207 Emergency Management.
This was introduced at the previous board meeting, and so it's appropriate for us to adopt it, unless there are questions or statements.
Mr. Chairman, the county board did take the issue up, and they did vote to receive us as a customer, so with the approval of the rescission of this ordinance, you'll be ready to go. Tomorrow, we'll send a letter to the state announcing the change.
And we've also had discussions and, I think, a training session, right, that our two liaisons, that will be our emergency managers, have gone over to the county to kind of make sure that they're in sync with county requirements?
That's correct.
And can serve the needs of Clinton Township in a case of an emergency.
That's correct.
Supervisor, I can make a motion to approve.
Moved by treasurer Iello?
Support.
Supported by trustee Metuzak. Further discussion? Roll call.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay, and that brings us to item number 5A, previously item number 11, request approval for Class C quota liquor license for Vinny's Brunch at 20828 Hall Road, Clinton Township, 3A.
Mr. Supervisor, they are here, they do have representation, if attorney Seth Tompkins would come up, and if there's any questions that anybody can have, the, things have changed with Vinny's Brunch, and maybe you can speak to that in terms of what the previous decision was and how it was...
Absolutely. Hi, everybody, my name is Seth Tompkins, I am the attorney for Vinny's Brunch LLC. There have been a couple updates since the prior hearing when we came before you, and this request was denied. First, all of the city inspections have gone through, and they've been approved on everything, including the fire inspection, which, that was a fiasco, but that was because of their vendor, and they had to fire a vendor and get a new vendor, but it's all fixed, it had to do with CO2. It was nothing that, there was no real danger. The big change was that we were waiting for the landlord to give us some indication as to whether or not they would be willing to work with us to allow us to expand our floor space in the future, and we were able to secure a letter of intent that said, the problem that we have right now is the two adjacent units are two national chains, there's a pizza place and a sandwich place that, you know, they have a long-term lease, but we did secure a letter of intent that stated that when they leave, that we can actually expand our dining room space into those adjacent units. And, but in the meantime, we also talked about expanding the existing business hours if this board were to approve this request, and right now, Vinny's Brunch is, it's a breakfast and lunch place, but they are going to expand into dinner hours. Vinny's son is going to be running, where is he? Oh, I saw him. He just left, okay. Vinny's son is going to be running the evening shift, and we also talked about opening up on Sundays for brunch as well, and while the family will be at church, they will have a manager that will be operating on Sunday mornings. I wanted to plead with this court that I know that these quota licenses come few and far between, you know, once every 10 years, if you have an increase in your population, you get another one, okay? And I know that a lot of times municipalities want to hold on to these, to dangle in front of potential future developers, but, you know, in my practice, I work primarily with family-run businesses. I run, you know, even in the larger businesses that I've worked with in the past, they're family-run businesses, and this is a real family-run business, and Vinny and Lisa, they moved their family from the west side over to this side of town, and they opened up their, their business in this community, and their family operates in this community, and so the people that are all here, they all work at Vinny's Brunch, but they're also family with each other. This is Lisa's sisters, and there's, there's Vinny and Lisa's son, and they all, they're, you know, if you ever want to see Vinny and his family, they're there. And I know that many people in this community rely upon this place on a, on a daily and weekly basis to meet their friends, to meet colleagues, to have brunch or lunch with friends and family, and I would just ask that this community help this family, because in order to get a Class C liquor license, it's very expensive to go on the open market, and so, you know, the next Chili's that comes into town, you know, they can afford to go get a liquor license. I always like to see these quota licenses go to, to businesses that are, have already been supportive of the community, and I think it's something that the community can do in order to support these businesses, to help them grow. And so, I know the last time we were here, well, I wasn't here, but that was a notice in AFO, so I appreciate you allowing us to go back, there wasn't a plan for this business going forward, and how are they going to use this license to expand their business? But there is a plan. You know, immediately, they were, they're going to extend their hours, they're going to become a dinner place, and they're going to have Sunday brunch, and that's something that's immediate, and they have a plan for the future that their landlord has agreed, you know, tentative, when that space becomes available, they will expand their dining room. You know, having this license allows them, you know, we can't move, because of the agreement that we have, we can never move this license out of this community, but this allows them also to think, well, maybe we can invest in buying our own building at some point in time, because we have this to draw a larger group of people, you know, but without having this type of investment in this, this type of business, you know, it's going to be hard for them to become bigger and to actually grow their business, so that's all. I just hope that you're supportive of them. And Vinny and Lisa are here to answer any questions they have. I hope you looked at the dinner menu, it looks pretty good, they have some cocktail ideas.
I can say that I had lunch there, but it was actually breakfast.
Yeah.
And it was very good. Always appreciate Vinny's, they do a great, a great, a great spot to meet somebody for lunch, but we'll open it up to the board, Ms. Meltzer.
Thank you, supervisor. I'm very impressed that you guys have been, you're back here so quickly, and that you were easily able to, probably not easily, but you were able and willing to pivot, your clients were able to pivot on the demands of this township, and I don't think that is an easy thing to do. I just am very pleased to see that you're willing to hear what this board has asked of you, and that you're going to be doing, your clients are going to be doing the best that they can to accommodate that. Now, there's two sides of the coin, right? The one perspective is, you know, we, we give these, these licenses to bigger corporations, which we've done in the past, or we give to small mom-and-pop stores, which we have also done in the past, and I'm an advocate of helping out the small guy, the little guy, and the ones that certainly have an incredible work ethic, which this business does, and they produce an incredible product. I think they've done a great job. There's no guarantee, some people say, oh, my gosh, if you're on Hall Road, you can afford it, you know, you can spend the money. That is not necessarily the case. Look at, I read in the newspaper, Red Robin is possibly going to be going out of business. That is a huge food chain, and yet, there's no guarantee that, no matter how big you are, that you'll last, the ebb and flow of economic disparities that happen throughout time in every industry. So, I would really like to see this family get this license, and as, as supporter of that, I will make the motion to approve the request for a Class C quota license for Vinny's.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and support. Further discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple questions.
Trustee Wade?
Um, you said you had a tentative agreement with the landlord to go on either side?
Yes.
But it appears you're kind of landlocked in there.
Correct, right now, we are, yeah.
Yeah. Hypothetically, if a business or building opened up a quarter mile down the road, would you relocate, or...
As long as it was in Clinton Township. We've had this discussion. It opens up the possibility, it opens up the possibility, because when you go to a third-party bank and you want to open up a restaurant, okay?
Right.
There's a difference between opening up a restaurant and opening up a restaurant with a liquor license.
Right.
And so, it, this, this opens up possibilities in the being able to go get financing on There's a difference between opening up a restaurant and opening up a restaurant with a liquor license. And so it, this, this opens up possibilities in the being able to go get financing on like an SBA loan to prefer like an owner-occupied type of deal. I, I'm, I'm, I'm just a lawyer, right? I'm not a banker, but I've done enough of these deals where I know that, I, I closed on the, on a client purchased a Chinese restaurant up in, uh, up over in Jackson today, okay? And so, I know that it was easier for them to get that bank loan because there was a liquor license associated with that restaurant.
Sure.
So, is it a guarantee that they would move? No, because we don't know what the terms would be or what's available, you know? I, you know, I'm sure Red Robin wants to sell that property for eight bazillion dollars and it's probably not the best place for them. But it does, it does at least afford them the ability to look and to actually try to get real financing to do something like that, you know? I think probably what they would do is initially they would, they would open up in the evening hours and develop that business. And then, if they're allowed to expand, if, if the Hungry Howie's leaves, you know, then that would be a lot easier than up and moving everything, you already have a, a kitchen's very expensive to build, you know? So, I think that the, the goal is to stay there and build there if possible. But we had the discussion on would they, would they potentially move it to a different building if they had that chance? And that's a discussion that we could have if we had this license that we probably couldn't have otherwise. Does that make sense?
And then, if this was approved, what would be the turnaround time to get your hours expanded? I mean, would you need?
Oh, immediate, no, I mean, the, the, the application for the liquor license is already in. So, the only thing that we're waiting for is township approval. And then, that will, that will go forward, I can start working with them and the Liquor Control Investigator to actually move that along. But that, that menu is set so that it could pretty much be used relatively quickly, you know? It's, it's not going to be a, a long turnaround time to expand the hours at all. Trying to find someone to open up on Sunday mornings is going to be more difficult than finding someone to operate in the evenings. So, that's probably what's going to happen first and then they'll start the Sunday brunch.
Well, I'm busy on Sunday mornings, just so you know.
I work on Sunday.
No. And, and real quick, um, so they've got staff and everything ready to go if this
Yes.
thing went through?
Yes.
Okay.
Like I said, it's going to be easier to fill this, the, the evening times than it is the Sunday mornings. The Sunday mornings are family time, so they, yes, to answer your questions, yes, they will have staff for the evening.
Mr. Supervisor? Trustee Metuzak?
I'm always the one.
You know?
Vinnie's Restaurant is fabulous, everyone should go there. And it's, and it's a wonderful family restaurant, you should be very proud of what you've created. I'm one of those people that says, we have two of these licenses left. And, and I understand, this is a very solid position I hold, um, that I think these are valuable tools for economic development. Economic development along M59 is less problematic than economic development along Grossbeck and Greshit. And so I would like, I'm going to vote no, not because I don't like the restaurant or because I think this is a great idea, but because we have two of these left and we don't get another until six years from now.
2031.
And so I, I want to hold on to these because I think they're really valuable in terms of the township's economic development.
So, can I, I, I would like to just, first off, I, I understand, okay? I do know that the township does have other tools with respect to liquor licenses that it can use for economic development. There are these economic redevelopment liquor licenses that are available in either designated economic redevelopment zones or downtown development authorities. And so there are other tools that the township does have available to it in order to use liquor licenses to coax development. Unfortunately, this area, this, this place is in, in one of those zones. So, if we could ask for one of those licenses, we would, it's a $20,000 license, it's something that they can afford. But the problem is, is that a regular Class C liquor license now is just, it's much, much higher and it's something that they really can't go out of pocket for. So, while I understand your position, I don't, I, and I don't know what the history of the township has been, have you have been successfully been able to draw the next Chili's into town because you were able to, to give them one of these liquor licenses, I don't know, I don't know what the history is. What I'm saying is, is that, that while I understand and I respect your position, I think that there are other tools that the township can use to, to meet what you want, but that this particular license would really help this family that has no other, that has no other choice. If they don't have this, they're kind of stuck in what they're at, you know? So, that's all, I just wanted you to realize, there's other tools out there.
I got Seth.
Yes.
Last name?
Tompkins, sorry.
Tompkins, thank you, Mr. Tompkins. So...
You can call me Seth.
Appreciate that. Try to, try to make sure that I'm doing this as professional as we can. So, you mentioned these other licenses. We do have a Greshit DDA, the Downtown Development Authority. But Clinton Township is more like a collection of neighborhoods. We do not have a downtown.
Right.
And a lot of these economic development incentives are more geared towards cities with downtowns. Do you believe that somehow these other licenses would be available to the township? And I'm wondering if you've explored that because I'm not sure that they are.
Well, this is something that the township would have to work with the county in order to establish these zones.
Okay.
But if and when they're established, then yeah, they would be available, it's under, it's the state law. The only, there's different requirements, whether it's an economic redevelopment zone or a downtown development authority, there are different quota numbers based on the actual development dollars spent in those particular zones over a course of the five previous years. But even so, the, the threshold is very low, you know? And so, if you, in a DDA, you're going to have dozens and dozens of these licenses available in economic development zones, it might be, you know, three times less because of the, the, the amount of money that, that are needed in them. And if, if the township wants, I can hook you up with the woman up in Liquor Control Commission that, that does this and she's very good, she can help you do what you need to get done.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that contact information.
Yeah.
Hours of operation? What are we expanding to?
I think, is it 10? 10.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, 10 PM. So, right now they close early, you know, just right after lunch. So, this would add the entire afternoon and evening. So, it would not be a late night bar, it would be a restaurant.
We have a reverter clause on these liquor licenses. Some have allowed them to revert back, others hang on to them. They're available then, soon as we award it and the Liquor Control Commission approves it, they're available on the open market?
No, there's a three-year period of time after the issuance of a new license before it can be transferred over for ownership. But after that...
But it becomes an asset owned by?
Yes.
The operators of the restaurant?
Yes.
So, are your clients willing to, uh, enter into a reverter clause agreement?
Yes, it was our understanding that as part of the application process, this is something that we'd have to agree to and that if there was going to be an approval, it would be conditioned upon us agreeing to it. And I've explained that to the clients and that's why I said that maybe if they decide to move, they'd only move within the community, they wouldn't leave the municipality, so that that license wouldn't leave.
Supervisor, they did sign that reversion clause?
Okay, so Madam Clerk, the liquor license, quota license that was awarded to Ms. Maris, are we able to execute the reverter clause on that?
That would be a legal, a question, legal question you'd want to ask Attorney Dolan?
Attorney Dolan?
To my knowledge, yes, I mean, I haven't, I don't have it right in front of me, but, you know, we can start the process unless there's been some change in the status of the license from, uh, simply at this point in time being an escrow, so. I mean, they, they basically, to my knowledge, it went out of business, is that correct?
It did, yes. It's, it is an escrow at this time.
Right.
So, it's currently an escrow, when did they go out of business? Does anybody know?
It's been a year, I think.
About a year?
Well, maybe not quite. However, they're, that escrow, when, when a liquor license is placed in escrow, they still have responsibility to pay that annual, they have to, it's by May 1st, I believe it's $600.
April 30th, yeah.
Yeah. Before May, before May 1st, I think is the deadline. So, um, I mean, I believe it's $600 an annual renewal the state requires. Now, if they fail to do that, then that goes back into, it is likely, I should say, because really believe, you know, this is, the state operates these. But for the most part, and what has happened in the past, is that liquor license goes back into our quota and then we get that and can reissue that.
Do you believe that we're getting that license back?
I have, I...
And have there been any steps initiated to get that liquor license back to the township in order to be awarded?
I've spoken to the owner, uh, just briefly on the matter. We weren't in a location that was conducive to us sitting down and actually gathering the, you know, the information that would tell me whether or not they had the ability to reinvest.
I mean, if the owner said no, we don't have much recourse. Is that true or not?
I would say it's true, but again, the attorney is the one that would be fighting for us on that one.
Mr. Dolan?
Okay, well, the, the circumstances that exist in that situation now, I'm not apprised of. When we go, you know, the township always wants to see businesses succeed. We don't like it when they don't. And in some cases, if a business goes out of business and it's in escrow for a short period, we're not going to step in and try to take a license back if we think there's an opportunity for the license to go back in, into the community quickly and become a successful business. I have not had any conversations directly with the property owner on this. I don't know exactly what the, I, for example, I don't know exactly what the date was when this went into escrow and so on. So, we're reluctant to answer without having all the facts before us, but we've successfully obtained reversions of licenses in the past, so I'll leave it at that.
Can I, um, I've done this for like 20 something years, so there's plenty of communities that, that do this, okay? The, the, Auburn Hills does this all the time. So, they actually have a separate like LLC that they've created in order to take licenses back. So, it's, I mean, Commerce does this, uh, Farmington Hills does this, um, there's plenty of communities that do this. You know, a lot of times, be, you know, when Farmington Hills puts restrictions on licenses that you can sell it, but only you can sell it to someone that's going to be opening up to Farmington Hills. And so, the guy getting that license knows that that license is worth less, you know? It's not worthless, but it's worth less because the, the universe of potential buyers, right? I've been, I've been someone, I, I've been, recently I got a license for someone in Farmington Hills, we had to agree to that, and I worked with someone in Farmington Hills that had to buy one of those licenses and then agree to that also. So, it's a separate contract. They're enforced through contract actions, you know? It, there's nothing that says that you have to give us this resolution approving this, right? So, that would be the municipality's consideration and our consideration would be, we would agree to allow you to have this future interest in the license. And, uh, I'm not going to tell anyone how to do their job and in the future, maybe you should file UCC financing statements against these to secure the township's interests so that you can't have a buyer in the ordinary course come and just like snatch them up from you from someone who wants to just sell it out from under you, you know? So, this is something to think about. You become, you, you put the world on notice, we have an interest in this license.
Okay. In terms of the lease agreement?
Yep.
You said long-term.
Well, that's the problem, we don't know...
The other companies are long-term leases.
It's, it's a Hungry Howie's and a, and a, what is it?
Subway.
Subway, I mean, yeah, it's, right now, they, one of the, one of the leases was supposed to go, but they just re-upped. So, it's kind of like, you know, when one of those owners gets sick of owning their place and the franchise doesn't want to give it to someone else, that's kind of like when we can get in. But we don't, we don't control that, we can only control what we can control, right? So, we can control the expansion of the business right now by adding the night shift and adding Sundays. And that's what we can control right now, you know? We can control looking for potential other locations to put this, to build out, that's going to take time, we've got to find a spot, they've got to get the financing, right? But without this license, it makes it all virtually impossible to do. So, there's expansion that we can do and it's within our control and there's expansion that's kind of like now within our control.
All right, so let's talk about that. So, this is kind of leverage to secure financing?
Yeah.
Do the lenders lean the license?
The lenders would lean the license.
So, in other words, they wind up with a claim on the license?
They may, but if...
Rather than any client, claim, would they be in front of us or in back of us?
That's something that they'd have to deal with the township on, you know? And so, it, it's, I, I had a, there, I had a, there was a lien on a client's license in Commerce and the township is making the lender sell it to someone at that location in Commerce. So, it's, it, there's, it's, you have a way to protect yourself and quite frankly, I don't think this place is going to go out of business or leave, they've got too much invested in it.
Yep.
So, I don't think that that's something that the township needs to worry about, this particular business.
And we wish them years of success.
Right. And, and I think that with this license, it would ensure that they would have even more success, you know? So, yeah, sir, I'm sorry.
I have to recognize.
I apologize.
Okay, I surrender the floor. Trustee, you know what, Mr. Dolan first and then Trustee King?
It's basically a race notice filing system on, on that, correct?
Sure. So, if you were filed in front of the bank, then the bank would take behind you. The bank may come and say, hey, we need to have some sort of subordination agreement or some sort of agreement with the township, but it would force that conversation and then we can deal with it then, you know? I mean, the license, out of the entire thing, you have to remember the license between real estate and business assets and then the liquor license. The liquor license is going to be very important, but it's still probably going to be the smallest collateral of everything.
Trustee King?
Just a real quick question, either Madam Clerk or Attorney Dolan, can someone answer, have we gotten these licenses back at any moment in time, like?
From the reversion clause?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, we did.
We have.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, that's all.
He's a voluntary, from what I recall, it was the Palm Palace.
Well, they did sign it, they signed the reversion clause, so, yeah, they had, if any, if anyone was, could have gone, not complied, it was probably that one because they were from another country, but...
Mr. Dolan?
I was going to say, we, we've tried to basically be somewhat liberal on the way we've handled those, to try to encourage, uh, some sort of relocation of the business or reopening of the business, you know, at the, hopefully same site or whatever. But to the extent the sites are lost, you know, we've, in some cases, taken them back, I mean, it's, really depends on what's going to come next. And it's a policy decision by you as the board.
So, it sounds to me like there are some steps we can take to make this reversion clause stronger, but we haven't exercised those. That's what I was sort of gaining from the information that you were presenting to us.
If, if you're not recording a financing statement, then I would do that. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I don't know how you're doing it, that's...
Is there, I'm sorry, is there?
Madam Clerk.
Is there a difference between the UCC filing and the lean?
No, it's the same thing.
It is one and the same. Okay.
Madam Clerk, are we filing?
It's like a collateral assignment.
It's a reassignment agreement is what it's typically called.
But it just gives us a little more, it puts us ahead of...
Not necessarily, usually...
Yeah, it can, it can give us a little more...
Yeah. It's, it's somewhat complicated because it comes down to, in many cases, the collateralization that they need to get financing. Because if they get subordinated to our first interest, then they may have trouble with their financing.
But may, may I make a comment? If you have someone that's actually going to be purchasing a piece of property and investing upwards of a million dollars to develop a property where they have to go get the financing, maybe at that point, it's worth it to this community to say, okay, we're going to subordinate our interests, but it would be up to you at that point. So, it wouldn't be, we're getting nothing out of it, it's, we're getting a new development and a new restaurant out of it at that point. So, yes, if, if there was subordination that was required, then you would subordinate whatever interest you would read to subordinate to. This is all future hypothetical, you know, this is...
Well, but, but a lot of the growth that you're basing this application on is future hypothetical.
No, the growth that I'm basing it on is immediate, they're going to double the amount of hours that they're open right now and that's, that's immediate, you know? That's doubling their payroll, that's doubling their liability, that's doubling the, you know, the, the amount of, it's, 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 it's actually significant, you know, adding in a, you know?
I'm not discounting that part of it.
So, I'm saying that without the license, it, and, and look, we haven't even, maybe I don't, they've got to look for other sites, they've got to go get, look for financing, so, so, no, no, this is not the main focus that I really want this board to let go down. But I'm happy to talk to you guys afterwards, I, I really want to focus on the fact that they have a plan. They have a plan to expand their business now, okay? And their plan is, they're going to double the amount of hours that they have right now on the days that they're open and they're going to open on Sundays. And then, we have a plan that if and when one of these adjacent units leave, they're going to go expand their dining room, okay? And, but, I'm just saying, it opens up the possibility of them looking for new locations and to make a greater investment in the community by going and getting real financing. and to make a greater investment in the community by going and getting real financing. So, no, I don't want you to think that this is the reason that we want the license, we want the license because they have plans right now, you know? That's, and I'm happy to talk to city attorney, and the clerk, and you, and anyone about liquor stuff. Kim has my contact information, use me as a resource, I'm happy to help. So, you know, whether it's with the liquor license stuff or, you know, secure financing.
Mr.?
Okay. Further discussion?
Yes, so, Mr. Tompkins?
Yes, sir.
I agree that, or, I'd like to add too, I would, as a business person myself, I would think the revenue would actually about triple if not more. Because when you're adding up those alcohol beverages, and they're going to be buying meals, with the extended hours, I think that would increase their gross revenues, triple it.
I don't know, I know-
I'm just hypothetically, as a business person, I mean, I mean, the number is kind of, you know, two plus two equals four there.
I think it would, it's a significant investment for them-
Yes.
-to increase the hours, and yeah, I do believe that there would be increased revenue, and it would be a lost opportunity if they had a liquor license and didn't expand their hours. So I agree with you, I don't know what the numbers would be though.
Right.
Okay, further discussion? And Mr. Dolan?
So the obvious question now is, are they able to agree to subordinate on their license with regard to financing? In other words, can they get whatever financing they need with our interests being first lane on the license?
I don't, I don't know, we haven't even, I'm sorry, was that directed to me? I'm sorry, Supervisor.
We just had that discussion, you know, if we're going to start using financing statements, then, you know, we, we're going to have to find out if it's going to impact their capacity to actually operate. Can they get the financing that they need on this, if that's what they're looking for, and that's one of the reasons they need the license, if they're going to be subordinated?
Okay. Clerk Meltzer, you made the motion on this. Would you be willing to add on to that motion that we file the UCCs, that the reverter clause is strengthened to the level that it can be?
No, not-
And that there's subordination language on the agreement?
I'm not opposed to it in itself, but I just feel that to impose this upon the applicant at this point is, you know, it's too late.
Well, it is a free liquor license, and the board hasn't acted yet.
No, it's not about that, it's that, well, sometimes you get what you ask for, and I'm just concerned about our positioning.
They can always come back to us to say, hey, we have a plan for future expansion, and we want to do this and this and this, but our lenders have asked us to approach the township regarding subordination.
I think that he has made it clear, and I believe in my heart, I totally believe that this family, this business is going to be here in Clinton Township, they're going to prosper here at this location to the extent that they probably will have to move out because they're going to be, they're going to want to serve others if, if they can't get expansion on either side of their existing location. However, you know, I just think that they would stay here in Clinton Township, they might look at Grashit, they might look at the DDA, they might look at those locations, and as such, you know, expand that development within our township. I think, I don't know, what, can I through you? I mean, Mr. Tompkins, can, can they, can you-
I'm adding, I'm asking you if you want, okay.
Well, I'm just wondering if this is a-
I'm sorry. We won't object to that, I think that you have a right to file the financing statement anyways.
That's what I'm asking for.
Under the current, I just, I think you have the right to do it, you know? And I have no objection, we have no objection to that.
Okay.
No objection to that, you know?
And we can file the UCC filing.
Yeah, and if we have to come back and-
Subordination, right?
The subordination-
We don't want to turn it into a race of who can get to the filing first, I mean, we just want to make sure that we come first.
Right. What it is, is don't worry about the subordination agreement until and if we need to come to you and ask for it, and then we'll deal with it then. That's only if we get a financier, and they're going to see UCC one, and they're going to say, what's this all about? And we're going to explain it to them. But again, this is all, this is like, you know, if we start looking for a property now, it's going to take at least 12 months before we even have an agreement under, you know, so it's, it's, this is all down the road, you know?
So is that what you're looking for then, Supervisor, is that language?
Looking for an add-on to make sure that the financing statements are filed with UCC.
Okay.
Yeah, we have no objection.
All right, I don't, I have no objection to adding that to my motion. Do you have an objection or second?
No, I don't.
Okay. It's been motion and seconded.
So are we including subordination or not, if needed?
Well, he said that it's not even-
Not including it?
Necessary at this point.
I'll support the motion.
We have a second and a support.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, roll call.
Clerk Meltzer, yes? Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Matusak?
No.
Trustee Crass?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Unfortunately, no.
I thought we'd do it for you. Trustee King?
No.
Motion passes, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I do thank all of you, and I understand, I understand the no votes, and I do still think that, you know, you do have lots of tools, and I do look forward to getting a telephone call, and I'm happy to help the community figure out other ways to use liquor licenses for development purposes, so, but I thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the expertise that you've lent to this discussion.
Thank you so much, thank you very much. Sorry, it took so long.
Is that yours here? Is this your bag?
This is my bag. This is my whole life, thank you so much. All right.
Okay, item number six, approval of the budget, thank you so much.
Did you want me to read this, or, not, you don't need me to, or do you want?
Yeah, you can read that, yeah, because that's really the only changes.
Okay.
There's one more change beyond that, but.
All right, dear members of the board, the proposed 2025-26 budget was presented at the March 3, 2025 board meeting. Since that time, we have incorporated the following changes into the budget. amended the 2024-25 overtime budget in the fire fund as approved at the March 3, 2025 board meeting. The effect of this change is an increase in fire fund expenditures of $50,000. Added is the police social worker grant revenue and related expenditures to the 2025-26 police fund budget as approved at the February 24, 2025 board meeting. The effect of this change is an increase in police fund revenues and police fund expenditures of $115,000 each. There is no effect on the fund balance in the police fund as a result of this change. Also, is the police department personnel have conducted further research into the renovations needed for the gun range, which indicated that the cost will be substantially higher than anticipated. Because of this additional information and the concerns on the financial sustainability of the police fund, the police chief has requested the renovation to the gun range be removed from the 2025-26 proposed budget. The effect of this change is a decrease in the police fund expenditure budget of $250,000. At this time, we are requesting the board adopt, they requested March 31, 2026 budget, including the proposal for additional contributions to the police and fire pension system, retire your healthcare trust, and MERS pension system, as well as adopting the estimated 331-25 amended budget as presented, including the above referenced changes to each year. In addition, we are requesting the board approve the continuation of the contract with Richmond Lennox EMS for provision of smart busting services, including the allocation of $215,000 of fiscal year 2026 smart municipal and community credits, 100% of the smart specialized services credits, and $100,000 of unused prior year credits to Richmond Lennox EMS. Sincerely, Mary Heine, Finance Director.
Questions from the board?
Just a quick-
Clerk Meltzer.
Thank you. So I know I had, my staff had sent up to you the reduction in our request for conferences?
Yes.
Now that, so that was not reflected in this?
That's not in here, no.
And why not? Because these other ones were also-
Because it was, it's already done, and we didn't have the time to make that change. And it's, and it's a reduction. Yes, it's a reduction. So there is enough money in the budget, it's just a reduction.
Okay.
So we'll just end up saving more.
So we have reduced that, I think by, I don't know, $20,000 or something like that.
I don't remember the numbers, but.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Further discussion? Trustee Wade?
Yes, with the $250,000 that is going to be removed in the gun range put on hold.
Yes.
Obviously, if they need those changes, they'll probably have to do it next year, I would assume.
They're going to push it along as far as they can, and try and find some grant funding to pay for it.
Okay. Would you take that $250,000 and put it in abeyance and like hold it towards the final cost of that, or you just put it back in the fund?
It's just in the fund.
Okay.
Yep.
But it stays in the police fund?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were going to try to build money up in increments, or, okay.
Nope.
Supervisor, I'd like to make the motion approve.
Well, there is one additional change, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Further down the budget, or the board meeting tonight is about heritage estates and the emergency repairs. That is not reflected in this budget, so we will need to add that to the heritage estates' senior housing fund budget. It's an increase to their revenue, because there's insurance funding for that, of $286,478.97, and the expenditures are $291,478.97, differences are $5,000 deductible. So we will need to make that change once we finalize what all the numbers are. So that is one additional change that we will need to put into the final budget numbers.
Okay. Would you help us formulate the motion?
Basically what it says in the letter. So I'd like there to be two motions.
So approve the budget based, including the details outlined in the letter-
Yep.
-along with the heritage estates change.
Yes, yes, mhm.
Okay.
I'd like that motion.
That has been moved by Treasurer Aiello.
I'll support it.
And it's been supported by Trustee Wade. Further discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Trustee Crass?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Do you want a separate motion for the smart stuff? Or, I mean, it's referenced in the letter and discussed?
No, I think we included it together.
Okay, okay.
So because when I detailed the changes in the letter along with the-
Changes in the letter, yep. Okay, all right, we are good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to item number seven, public hearing for Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Land Acquisition Grant Application.
Dear Honorable Board Members, pursuant to prior Township Board discussion and direction, the Department of Public Services is preparing a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application to acquire a property within George George Park and Woodrow Woody Park boundaries for future recreation purposes in Glen Township. This grant application is an opportunity for Clinton Township to leverage costs to purchase this property using land acquisition grant monies from the MNRTF. The township's impetus in it to acquire additional park land properties is consistent with the goals outlined in the Clinton Township Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the Strategic Plan. The subject property is an existing residence at 21272 Bellevue, parcel number 16-11-15-177-011. The acquisition of this property would be in addition to George George Park and Woodrow Woody Park for future recreation opportunities. The current property owner is a willing seller, which is a requirement of the MNRTF Land Acquisition Application Process. This property was recently appraised at a value of $380,000. An additional $20,000 is being requested on the other grant eligible expenses, for instance, recording fees, transfer tax, tax proration, title insurance, closing fees, title search, final appraisal, and DNR project signage. Thus, the total land acquisition amount is $400,000. To maximize the application scoring and to be consistent with prior land acquisition submittals, we are proposing a 30% match for this application. The MNRTF program requires a minimum 25% match. This requires a commitment-based, I'm sorry, a committed match of $120,000 from Clinton Township, with a total grant amount of $280,000 from the MNRTF. The grant application's submittal deadline is April 1, 2025. The next steps in the process requires that a public hearing be conducted with information recorded with certified minutes. Once a public hearing process is conducted and closed, the Clinton Township Board of Trustees can consider to adopt the adoption of the required resolution of support for this MNRTF land acquisition grant submittal. Please review this information and contact Clinton Township DPS with any questions regarding this application. Additionally, our team will be at the March 17, 2025 board meeting to answer any questions from the Clinton Township Board and members of the public. Thank you, Mary Bednar, PE and Public Services Director.
Okay, so Mr. Dolan, with the reading of that letter, is it fair to say that the public hearing is now open?
Motion in support to open the public hearing with these DNR ones, they have a lot of formality to it, so-
Okay.
We would move to open, and then we close the public hearing after an opportunity for any public present to participate.
Okay, so a motion to open the public hearing is in order?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Moved by Trustee Matusak, supported by Clerk Meltzer. Roll call.
Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes? Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Crass?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number eight is resolution to-
Oh, we got to do the public hearing.
Comments.
Oh, okay, excuse me, I have to call for a public hearing before I actually bring the issue forward.
You have to, comments.
Okay. Public comment, board members? Members of the public? Members of the public, going once?
And there's-
Twice?
There's no request remotely, yeah, there.
We are not seeing any online, or?
Correct.
Okay. Did a motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Support.
Been moved by Treasurer Aiello, supported by Trustee Matusak. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Crass?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay, item number eight is a resolution to submit to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Land Acquisition Grant Application.
The, the letter is the same, so at this point, a resolution in review of that would be appropriate.
In its format. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Moved by Clerk Meltzer, supported by Treasurer Aiello. Further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Supervisor?
Trustee Matusak?
A question to Ms. Bednar through you. Last time we looked at this, it was not clear that the owner really wanted to sell. Do we have an indication that the owner wishes to sell?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Clerk Meltzer, yes? Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Trustee Crass?
Yes.
Dear Honorable Board of Trustees, on March 4th, 2025, the Budget Ways and Means Committee met with the Director of Public Services, Mary Bednar, to discuss extending the water and sewer bills paper and envelopes contract a second year. During the discussion, Ms. Bednar shared that this previously went out to bid and was awarded as a one-year contract with the option to extend the contract an additional year. It was awarded to Image Printing as the low bidder for $25,397.50. The one-year contract will be coming to an end soon, and DPS would like to extend the contract a second year for the quoted amount of $26,432.50. Image Printing's 2025 rate is lower than the second bidder's 2024 rate. Ms. Bednar stated both the product and service image printing as provided is beyond satisfactory. As a result, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the Board of Trustees approve a second year extension of the water and sewer village, I'm sorry, sewer bills paper and envelopes contract with image printing in the amount of $26,432.50. Please contact Mary Bednar or myself for further information or questions concerning this recommendation. Respectfully, Julie Matuzak, trustee and chair for Budget Ways and Means Committee.
Discussions from the board.
Make a motion to approve the second-year contract?
Second.
Ms. Bednar, so are we waiving the bid process on this? Or, I don't think we need to, because it was awarded with an extension possibility?
Correct. We did go out to bid on this with the extension prices, so I don't believe we need to, because it was bid out in accordance with our bid policy. It was just bid out a year ago.
Okay. And it's my understanding that you used to keep all of these in the, what is now the trustees' office? Do you have space to store all of them?
So, that's one of the nice things with this vendor, is they'll actually store it for us and bring large shipments to us when we need it, but, you know, so we do have proper storage.
All right.
You got room.
I'm glad, that was one question we hadn't talked about at the previous meetings. Okay, been moved and supported. Roll call.
Trustee Matuzak?
Yes.
I was ready to move on. Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 10, approval to establish a Stormwater Infrastructure Committee.
On March 4th, 2025, the Budget Ways and Means Committee met with the Director of Public Services, Mary Bednar, to discuss aging drainage systems within the township. During the discussion, Ms. Bednar shared the challenges that the aging drainage system poses, especially for those in private easements. Depending on the root cause, there are varying degrees of failure that can and have occurred. The complexities of the aging drainage system, along with possible funding solutions, were discussed, and it was determined that further consideration of a designated committee would be beneficial. As a result, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the Board of Trustees approve forming a Stormwater Infrastructure Committee. Members to include: three board members, Director of Public Services, Assistant Superintendent of Public Works, Assistant Project Manager of Public Services, and Finance Director; advisory members on an unneeded basis to include the Township Attorney and Township Engineer. The mission is, this committee will review the jurisdiction of existing and proposed storm sewer drainage systems and determine possible funding mechanisms for operations, maintenance, and replacement of said systems. Term limit is one year. Please contact Mary Bednar or myself for further information or questions concerning this recommendation. Respectfully, Julie Matuzak, trustee and chair for Budget Ways and Means Committee.
Questions from the board? Clerk Meltzer.
Thank you. I just would like to ask if I can be on the committee.
Okay. Further discussion? So, Ms. Bednar, stormwater is an issue that isn't always clear.
Not a statement.
Hence, a committee, right? What's within our jurisdiction? What is not within our jurisdiction? If it's not in our jurisdiction, then who do we contact to make the recommendations? To get action from the appropriate agencies? As I'm thinking about this, you know, new mandates from the state, issues that we haven't necessarily seen before. I think that's the impetus from this recommendation. Add-on to that. I mean, are we on track here? I mean, I know this is at your request, but I think, you know, I think the board and the public assesses why this is necessary.
So, in, within Clinton Township, we have many rear yard storm systems and other storm systems that are in what's called private easements. So that's kind of the bulk of our storm sewers in the township. We also have public and other storm sewers, but the bulk of them are in private easements. What happens is when something happens in those private easements, for example, let's say a large tree grows and the roots gets into that easement, or a pipe fails, because in a lot of these subdivisions, they are, you know, 50, 60-year-old subdivisions, and just like roads and your roof, everything that you, you know, you build has a lifespan. Pipes tend to live, you know, to survive about 50 years, so they're coming to the near end of their life. So, we have to have this conversation going forward to figure out how to help our residents move forward with this, and, you know, what are the solutions? And there are many different possible solutions, but none of them are perfect, and so having this committee and talking about it and trying to talk through the process of how we might want to go out and help the residents, the end of the day, unfortunately, these ones in the private, we see, are the residents, there are the responsibility, but how can we help them acquire funds or whatever we need to do type, and that's what the emphasis of this committee is, to identify which ones are private, which ones are public, and then what kind of mechanisms that we can help them to move forward with correcting these problems in their backyards. And in some cases, in fact, at Budget Ways and Means, we showed some pictures of, you know, large holes in backyards. And some of these fixes could be as simple as a $5,000 fix, and some could be as much as a $100,000 fix, depending on the size of pipe and so forth. So, it is, I think the letter that Trustee Matuzak put together really summarizes that it's a complex issue and is a complex solution. And so we need to sit down and kind of go through it and step by step so we understand it.
Attorney Dolan.
Okay.
I think we need to be very clear on this. This is a massive expenditure issue, largely. Most of it involves properties that are basically private, and right now, there is no revenue source that's readily available to fulfill the needed expenditures. So this is a very difficult problem. It exists. It's not at all in any way unique to Clinton Township, but it's really, at this juncture, more or less, saying, we're willing to step forward and recognize it and at least try where we can to examine potential sources.
This might involve lobbying legislators.
Exactly.
Correct.
Ms. Meltzer?
I just wanted to say, I thought it was really, I almost laughed when I read the, you said, depending on the root cause, which is not necessarily root, but I just, I liked that. That was cute.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Trustee Matuzak?
Having sat through this discussion, which, number one, was very depressing, because it's a huge problem, and I'm not quite clear what we do. I know, as a trustee, I get calls from people saying their backyard is flooded and what is the township going to do about it? The reality is that it's probably not a township easement. It is probably the line that was built on your backyard when your subdivision was built in the 1970s or 80s, and technically, it's your problem. We would like to form this committee to try to figure out resources we can help residents to fix these issues, because they're not even our, they're not the township's issues, they're the residents' issues, but we feel a certain responsibility to try to figure out resources that may be helpful.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the discussion, because I think these are, these are the sticky calls, right? These are the calls we get, and we don't have great solutions for them. We have to deliver a lot of bad news oftentimes to say, hey, this is a private issue developed when your sub was developed. And so as a result of that, I think it's a proactive step in forming the committee, and I thought it was worthy of a little bit more discussion. Trustee Wade?
Real quick, if we do get a call from a resident, their backyard's flooding, can they come before that committee, or is that a closed committee? In other words, could I say, you know, this committee is meeting on the second Wednesday of the month, you can go there yourself and explain your problem?
What I would recommend, Mr. Gilliam, is it okay? What I would recommend is that they fill out a complaint through our Building Department, and then between the Building Department and the DPS Department, we will have someone look into it. We'll find out if it's a public sewer versus a, you know. The best thing would be for them to work through the department, you know, complaint process.
Okay.
And be able to move forward.
So start with the building process, it'll then wind up being looked at by engineering?
We collaborate, our GIS tech, Magda's been phenomenal with this. She's put that information on our desk, on our computers in the field, our crews are able to get there, say, okay, this is a private line, this is a public line.
Right.
It gives us the direction as inspectors to be able to call the right people. It may be private, I'm sorry, but this is something you and your neighbors have to resolve, or public, I contact Mary's office, have one of her inspectors come out to try to diagnose where the problem exists.
If I could add, public might mean not just, when, public doesn't necessarily mean township. Public could mean Department of Roads, the county. Public could mean Waters of the State, I mean, so that's why going through that process is important, is because we can hopefully guide the person if it's not something the township is directly responsible to the right agency that is.
Okay.
Mr. Supervisor? Through you, to whoever needs to answer. How does one file a complaint?
As most complaints, when it comes to any kind of building ordinance, and this is an ordinance, you file through the Building Department. If you go online to our website, click the link.
ClintonTownship.com.
And it fills it in, you fill it in, and it goes right to the clerical, the clerical staff member who processes it and gets it in the hands of our ordinance officer. It's a lot quicker that way. Emailing me, I am a busy guy, I try to get to them as quickly as possible, but I can assure you that Kaylee in our office will get it on their desk a lot quicker than I will typically. So I would advise to go that route.
If I could also add, it's important that it is written, because in many times, the ordinance enforcer that goes out, or my staff that goes out, needs to have permission to go onto different properties, and so that's where that written complaint gives us those permissions, versus a verbal, or say, you call saying, my friend Suzie, who lives over at this address, doesn't give us that permission that we might need.
Yeah, it gives us the right to enter as inspectors. If we can't enter your backyard to look at your problem, we can only look at it from the public right-of-way, which we won't get very far.
Okay. Further comments from the board? Public participant, or public comment? No, Mr. Bush.
This is just a quick, because one of the board members would have wanted to know how you'd find out if your complaint went through. On that complaint form, at the bottom, it says, "Request an email verification." I recommend everybody do that, and then you know that your complaint went through, it didn't get lost in the mail. So it's just a public service.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion? We have a motion?
Mr. Gilliam?
Yeah.
We are looking for members of the committee. Ms. Meltzer mentioned she was interested in being in the committee. I would like to possibly have other board members, because it is complicated. My staff, we can sit here and, but, you know, it is a complicated thing that we need to have the right people.
Supervisor? I'd like to recommend myself as well, be on the committee.
Others?
I sat through this discussion once.
Well, I think I'm ad hoc on all committees anyways, but...
I said three, but two is fine, I mean, whatever, you know, we'll keep everyone in the loop.
Well, we'll see if we can round it out, and I will try to adjust my schedule as well. So, seeing no further discussion, roll call?
We don't have a motion yet, and would that include committee members then, in that motion? If that's the case, I can make that motion to create the committee and, at this time, approve committee members Kim Meltzer and Shannon King.
I'll support that.
As well as the staff.
As well as staff, and everybody mentioned in the letter.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, roll call.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Matuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 12, request approval to waive Building Department food truck permit fees for Chippewa Valley schools events.
Dear Board Members, in an effort of supporting our local schools and community, I would like to request waiving the $75 Building Department food truck fee for township school events. School events are held for the benefit of the student body or, and our funding efforts that will assist student extracurricular activities. By waiving the fee, it will ease the financial burden on our schools and ultimately our students. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Bruce Wade, trustee.
Mr. Dolan?
Presented with this request by Mr. Wade is a proposed amendment to the food truck ordinance, which basically allows where a governmental entity is involved and the funds are being used for charitable purposes, that the fee that otherwise would be required of the site be waived, and also allows the fee for the vehicle, the truck that's being parked there, to be waived and inspection waived if it's in the township's best interest to do that. So that's all included in that.
What? Okay.
That's not what it said.
Yeah, so I think, all right, so there's, this is a two-step process, Mr. Dolan, if I'm not mistaken.
We're introducing and publishing.
Okay, but, well, I get that, for the ordinance part of it, but there's currently, food trucks have to be licensed, then there's a permit. This waives the permit fee.
There's actually two processes involved in the food truck. One is the site location, you have to pay a $75 fee, and you have to get the site approved. And another is for the truck itself, so if someone comes into the township and wants to basically operate a food truck, before they actually go to a particular site, the truck itself is supposed to be inspected and permitted. This is basically allowing the governmental entity, which mostly would be schools, to basically have the fee waived on the location. So there wouldn't be any fee associated with that. It also allows, in the discretion of the township, the opportunity to waive the fee on the truck. It doesn't mandate that that would occur in all situations, but it leaves it up to the township to determine whether or not to do that. My understanding is, I'm sorry.
Trustee Wade?
Yeah.
Is that the fire department does an initial inspection when the year starts on the truck?
I'm going to defer to Director Miller on this issue, because I think he can clarify.
I would like, I have no objection whatsoever to waiving the fees, other than stand up for the permit for the location of the trucks.
Right.
I'm not waiving the permit, just like we do with our contractors that come in to do work for Clinton Township. We've commonly waived that requirement if it so reads in their contract that way. No problem. But the inspection by fire?
I agree.
Our Parks and Rec puts trucks out here for special incentives, and those trucks don't get waived, and that's our own event.
It's not getting waived, Barry.
Well, it was brought up that, in your...
No, it said that you...
At our discretion.
At your discretion.
I would advise against that, that's your guys' call, I would advise against that. I just think the trucks need to be inspected. You're going to end up with an onslaught of trucks who are going to say, well, I'm going to work Chippewa Valley in March, and then I don't have to pay the rest of the year for other events, maybe in our subdivisions or...
No, that's not, it's only waived for that location.
I agree with the location, but you brought up the trucks themselves and fire department fees.
Right, but what it's saying is that it's entirely up to the township to waive that. There's no right to waiver on the truck. The truck, the waiver...
Maybe I misunderstood what you said, Mr. Dolan. I thought you had said you were talking about waiving fire department fees.
No, I'm talking about waiving the inspection on the truck that comes to that particular school site. For example, it may be, let me just give you an example. You may know that this truck is already permitted in another community, and that you would want to maybe cut them a break and not require them to have to pay the fee, since they're there for a charitable purpose anyway. The exact verbiage that I'll read is, "The truck, if not already licensed within the township, shall be subject to inspection in the discretion of the township pursuant to this ordinance. The location shall also be subject to inspection in the discretion of the township." What it's doing is, it's basically allowing you, as in your role on inspections, and the fire department in its role on inspections, to make that determination. It's not creating any right on the part of the applicant to have those inspections waived. If you take that out, then regardless of circumstance, there's no waiver on those inspections. So if there were circumstances that were unique that might warrant it, you can't do it.
Okay, so...
So you could do it 99 times out of 100 and waive it.
I would separate, I mean...
All right, so I'm going to see if I can separate this issue. So, let's entertain a motion for approval of waiving the fees for the specific request for Chippewa.
Can we expand that to all schools?
To all schools, yep.
The location fee. The location permit.
Fee.
For the location.
But wait, so permit fee, we're talking about waiving right now?
No.
Mr. Dolan?
For location.[1735.23]
The location permit.
Fee.
For the location.
But, but wait, so permit fee, we're talking about waiving right now, Mr. Dolan?
For location.
The way our ordinance is structured, the only way to do this is to amend the ordinance. It's right now a fee that's required under the ordinance. So you're going to have to amend the ordinance if you want to be able to do this. You can't just make a waiver of our fees. We don't do that because obviously.
We do it all the time.
Right.
Okay, got it. That was.
But we do. We've waived fees on permits quite often at this board. And that's, this is our mechanism to waive a fee.
Well, Mr. Miller, many departments, including your own, use a fee resolution for establishing fees. This is being done by ordinance instead.
But that's where my fee is in the resolution.
In the resolution?
There's.
That's when the board can waive that fee.
There's discretion, if you have a discretionary ability that's expressed, you can waive the fee.
Well, that's what we're talking about here.
No.
So was this ever introduced to a committee?
No. We, we spent what many, many, tons of time in a committee on this.
And that's why we then bring it forward. But, okay.
You need, you obviously need enabling authority to waive a fee. If you create a fee, if you have an ordinance and you have a fee and there's no enabling authority, you don't waive the fee. There's no, because obviously there's no legislative underpinning that would allow you to do it. This, as I pointed out, simply gives that underpinning to do it. It's not saying that you are entitled to get the fee waived. It's not saying you're entitled to get the inspection waived. If they choose to do it, they can. We can require inspections and fees in all cases, or we could wait, have no fees paid and require inspections. But at that point in time, you don't have authority to waive those inspections, Barry. If you want to have it that way, you, you can. I mean, these are choices that are policy choices.
I don't do an inspection on these jack.
By, by the board and it's your recommendation as department head, since you're administering it. But if you take away that authority, it won't, you know, it won't be there.
First, the building department does not inspect the locations because the, the timing and we've, we've spent, what, six months developing this ordinance at length? And it was brutal. And it's complex. It's not the easiest ordinance. Thank, thank God for our IT team that's built a nice platform on our website that actually gets them around the right path. But it's, the location permit that they get is a review of the locations they propose for the trucks. They give that document to me. I review the plan and say, perfect, you're 10 feet from a building, you're not blocking fire access, you're, you're, you're not putting the public in a difficult way of crossing where they shouldn't be. That's what I'm looking at. That is what this board should be waiving tonight for the schools. They still will present a plan. I spoke with Chippewa Valley and I said, you know, come to me with a plan for the high school. You have the band boosters, you have the football, you have the cheerleaders, you have different clubs that are coming forward and there's no reason for you to come and pay the building department to review and lose $75 towards what, where it should be going is the kids. So the bottom line is, that's what we should be waiving tonight. Now, the inspection of the trucks, I, I, the fire marshal would lose his mind if he heard this tonight. The inspection of the trucks has to happen. And I know it's discretionary and I, but I mean, I, I just, I, I really would advise we stick with the location permit and waiving that on the school properties. The school is going to come to me with a location with four or five different proposed areas. I'll review it once for the year and I'm going to issue them a permit to cover their whole season, one for the whole thing. So they don't have to keep coming back to me.
Assuming they're doing it in the same spot.
They're not. That's the thing. And I said, give me four or five locations on one plan.
Oh, got it.
And then I'll, I'll approve all of them at one time. You move forward with your events, the fire marshal looks at the trucks that are approved, he will get, in the past, what happens is the football club comes in and they say, hey, what trucks can I use? They'll contact the fire department, they'll get the list. And if they're not on the list, they'll send them to the fire department and the fire, the truck will benefit from doing that because they'll work other events throughout the township. It's festival, the, the St. Thackla's, St., you know, St. Charles cooks them or cooks their own. But I mean, different, the different church events throughout town. So just, I just caution you guys on that.
So this is been introduced?
Why don't I read the ordinance? Because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding.
Look, we're not adopting the ordinance tonight. So let's.
It's about three sentences long.
I read it, but.
Sorry, you're in front of me.
Okay, wait, I got a number of, okay. Trustee Metuzak, trustee King, trustee Wade, then trustee Kress.
If you look at the language that has been proposed under waiver of fee provision, if you delete all references to food trucks, you achieve what we're trying to achieve. So the waiver of fee provision for locations where the event and truck will be situated at property owned or controlled by a public entity, including, included by illustration a, a school or county, the permit fee for the location pursuant to the provisions of this chapter shall be subject to waiver upon application by the entity controlling the property where the, where the event will occur. Delete the entire next sentence. The location shall also be subject to inspection at the discretion of the township pursuant to this ordinance.
That's true, but I want to make it clear that if we do that, then a truck that comes to that location, so let's say that the, the school makes arrangements with whatever company to have a food truck. That food truck comes to that location and it doesn't, for example, ordinarily operate in the township and has, doesn't have approval as a food truck in the township, it's going to have to pay a $75 fee to get the truck registered.
That's right.
And then go to. If you're okay with that, that's fine.
In the first place.
All right.
These things blow them.
Well, the, the inspection was never waived. The, the.
There's a license for a food truck and there's a permit for a location. License shouldn't be waived, permit fees should be waived.
This ordinance can.
If it's a public.
Sorry, through the chair. This ordinance can be re-looked at once the fire code changes. The 2021 fire code, once adopted by our fire department, the building code is scheduled to change in April this, this year. At that time, the fire department usually follows suit and locks up with the building code. So that we are under the same provisions. At that time, there's food cut things. And I just, I think it's a good time to revisit this.
So I, yeah, so I think that that's complicated even more. I think what we're suggesting here is that when the schools call, they should be given a list of the licensed food trucks. And they should be limiting their contracts with food trucks to those that are licensed already.
Absolutely.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
We can take care of that then.
So Mr. Dolan, right now, we've introduced this and.
And publish.
Well, we would introduce and publish. My suggestion is simply that what we'll do is, I don't know what the timing is. I'll look to Mr. Wade on this. Is, will we have time to withdraw this and then come back and introduce at the next meeting and then at the following meeting adopt?
Yes. Can we introduce and change in between?
Well, basically, when there's such a significant revision, it's better off to just reintroduce with it more in form that you intend to adopt, I think. It's a pretty significant revision, so.
Mr. Wade or trustee Wade?
Yeah, just to kind of give you a 30-second background, what happened was Chippewa Valley PTO called me and if they go north of Hall Road to one of the Chippewa Valley schools in Macomb Township, there's no $75 fee. They come south of Hall, they get the $75 fee. And they're just looking to get that waived. The issue of the fire department doing an inspection really never came up. It was, and I had talked to Mr. Miller just briefly and he was very informative. And so it was a real simple request. They just wanted, if they could have a consistent thing for their schools.
Mr. Supervisor?
Ms. McGarrett?
If I could, I did look into that, trustee Wade. And the reason for that is that the communities north of Hall Road have not passed food truck ordinances yet. They are researching them and working on them currently, and that is probably likely to change in the future. I don't know if there will be a waiver for public entities or not at this point.
I don't know.
Trustee King?
I think if there was just maybe some better communication with the schools to sit down, maybe we can coordinate that type of conversation with, with Barry and some representative from the school to be able to look at the site plans and be able to have some identified areas where, again, they could, you know, similar to what I think Barry mentioned, would allow us to have some uniform standard areas of where they're at. And it wouldn't necessarily have all these basic, you know, these various variations and be able to make that work a little bit more smoothly, particularly for our schools that are within the township. If we can't get this resolved here, which it seems like it's kind of getting varied, we should probably take this as a budget ways and means and, and be able to work it out there and then come back crisply, you know, to our residents once we've figured it out. Unless, I mean, I would like to make a, a motion in that regard because it seems like we're still not, we, we haven't gotten this figured out yet.
Let me go through the list.
Okay.
And then, are you insisting on making the motion now?
Go through your list and then we'll see.
All right. Trustee Kress?
Attorney Dolan answered my question. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Wade, oh, I'm sorry, trustee, or excuse me, clerk Meltzer.
No, I'm just doing, because I got that.
Oh, well, you, okay. Trustee Wade?
I, I don't have a problem if I was pushing it back. I have no problem with that at all. But I think Mr. Miller mentioned that in the beginning of the year, he does an outlay for the schools. Is that correct of locations? So I don't think that's the issue. The issue is just the fee.
I agree.
And he, he's already providing that service. Am I correct?
Correct. And it's, I do have one application on my desk right now for, I don't know which one. One of the elementary schools.
Ottawa?
Which one?
Is Ottawa?
I, I don't remember. I'm sorry.
All right. Well, let's not speculate.
I don't want to guess which one, but they, I do have an application already on my desk for this and I'm holding it to wait for the results of this board meeting. They're trying to get, the good thing about, the good thing about the schools is they usually plan ahead. I, this is, they are never, very rarely are they coming to me last minute. So even, I mean, the football program comes to me months at a time, the band, same thing. So I mean, I, I think if we can get somebody on board at the school level, we can do that.
What we're facing is a school township issue. I think what we're facing is a township, township issue. And we need to have the ordinance redrafted so that it's in accordance with the current rules. And we're maintaining the license, we're providing a list of food trucks that are licensed to the schools, use these, and then we're waiving the permit fee.
I think we just need to come up with a way to waive the fees for those public entities.
Okay.
That's ultimately the.
So, so Mr. Dolan and Mr. Miller and Mr. Wade should get together and either bring this back on the next agenda or send it to by surprise means.
Yeah, it's, it's very simple. We're taking out the parts of it that relate to licensing the truck. We're keeping in the parts that relate to the location. We're providing that the fee waiver occurs on the location.
Everything's been said, but not by everybody. Now it has. So let's.
I can repeat it if you want.
Mr. Bouchard?
Again, I get very worried that when this ordinance changes, that nothing is left discretionary behind the scenes decisions because we've already seen where if I want to put a roof over my front porch, I've got to go for a variance. And other commercial properties have just given a free ride, they don't have to. The other thing is, there is no way at any event that's going to be at the school with kids and families that anybody should even consider waiving any kind of inspection on the trucks that come because they're filled with propane. And we all know Clinton Township's have, had some real explosion problems with stuff that wasn't investigated. So thank you.
Now everything's been said by everybody. So let's move this issue, I think we can just move off of this, right? You guys are going to meet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bring it back.
Bring it back when it's appropriate. Item number 13, bid award McKishney water main replacement and sanitary sewer improvements.
Dear board members, on March 6th, 2025, the town attorney of Clinton Clerk's office received and processed a total of three bids for the above-mentioned project. The as-read low bid amount was $1,111,365 from Breko Excavating Company LLC from Oak Park, Michigan. Upon evaluation of Breko Excavating's bid, form during the bid tabulation process and based on an email received from their office, a typographical error in the unit price for item 47-8-inch water main pipe burst was confirmed. The unit price for this item was shown as $700 per foot, but was intended to be $70 per foot. The attached bid form excerpt shows a total amount of $105,210,000, I'm sorry, $105,210 for this specific bid item. Using that value and dividing it by 1,0503 feet of pipe, it does calculate to the intended unit value price of $70 per foot. A written clarification and acknowledgement of the unit price typographical error from the low bidder is included with this letter. Per bidding document requirements, a waiver from the Clinton Township Board of Trustees will be required for this irregularity. A copy of the final bid tabulations with the identified unit price error is attached. The bid results and tabulations were reviewed by AEW, Clinton Township DPS staff and legal counsel. The project consists of the replacement of a 70-year-old 6-inch diameter cast iron water main with new 8-inch diameter PVC or HDPE water main piping by means of pipe bursting. The work also includes the installation of a new 10-inch diameter public sanitary sewer in a location that is currently served by aging septic systems. This utility work is planned to be completed by midsummer 2025. A road reconstruction project administered by the Macomb County Department of Roads follows this utility work with proposed completion in fall of 2025. These efforts meet Clinton Township's utility asset management goals and strategic plan goals for improved local roads by leveraging available match funding from the Macomb County Department of Roads subdivision Road Reconstruction Program. This project also includes replacement of a failing water main crossing under Clinton River Road. As a condition of bid requirements, prospective bidders were required to be pre-qualified in water main replacement and construction, water main pipe bursting, sanitary sewer construction, and horizontal directional drilling for water main. Breko Excavating Company LLC provided the prequalification information to be considered for bid award. Based upon the bid submitted, the required waiver of the bid irregularity and conditions noted above, we recommend that the McKishney water main and sanitary sewer improvements be awarded to Breko Excavating Company LLC located at 21201 Myers Road, Oak Park, Michigan 48237, in the amount of $1,111,365. Sincerely, Scott Chabot, senior project manager with AEW.
Questions from the board? Public. Seeing none? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the bid, including the, the error that was corrected.
A second then.
The move by trustee Metuzak, supported by clerk Meltzer. Further discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Ayala?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, item number 14, bid award Clinton Township Senior Center HVAC improvements.
Dear honorable trustee board members, on Tuesday, January 11th, 2025, three bids were received for the above-referenced project. The low bidder with a bid of $596,365 was Goyette Mechanical from Flint, Michigan. The two lowest bidders were interviewed in person by AEW, Peter Basso Associates and DPS, excuse me, DPS staff on Friday, January 31st, 2025, at the Civic Center. Both Goyette and Stuart Mechanical had a good understanding of the project and have similar experience. These bidders pass, possess the necessary qualifications and expertise to perform that work as defined in the bidding and construction documents. During bid, during post-bid interviews, the alternate of, the alternate of providing new control valves, actual actuators, thermostats, and DDC controller for existing terminal units in lieu of terminal unit replacement was discussed. This alternate was determined to be a viable option to pursue with incorporation into the final bid award and subsequent contract documents. The township's acceptance of the alternate will be a 11,000, will be an $11,592 deduction to Goyette Mechanical base bid amount of $596,306 for final project cost of $584,714. Based upon our evaluation of the bids and the interviews, AEW and the building committee recommends the contract for the senior center HVAC improvements be awarded to Goyette Mechanical at 3842 Gorey Avenue, Flint, Michigan 48506, with a base bid amount of $596,306, along with the alternate one amount of $11,592 as a deduct for a total bid award amount of $584,714. The attached budget breakdown shows the previously awarded Civic Center HVAC budget and the senior center HVAC budget that is based on. and the Senior Center HVAC budget that is based on these bid results. Please do not hesitate to contact us if you have any questions or concerns. Sincerely, Anderson Exson and Westrick, Jason Arlo, and Scott Kelly, senior project architect and executive vice president.
Questions from the board?
Um, just let me clarify that because I kind of read that wrong. Jason Arlo is the executive vice president and Scott Kelly is the senior project architect.
Mr. Gilliam?
Ms. Bednar?
If I could add, the very last paragraph said, based upon evaluation of the bids and interviews, AEW and the building committee, that should state DPS staff.
I'm sorry, where is that at, Mary?
The second, or the last paragraph, first sentence, based on evaluation of the bids and the interviews, AEW and the building committee should be, a, interviews, AEW, and DPS staff.
And DPS staff? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so noted.
Thank you.
And Mr. Arlo is also available as well from our office via remote. So if you, any questions that pertain to the matter?
So, Mr. Shebo, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. The bid, the lowest bidder was five ninety-six, but with those changes recommended, it's down to five eighty-four, seven fourteen.
That is correct.
Okay. And have we done work with Goyet before?
Yes, actually, they're currently working on the Civic Center HVAC right now.
Okay. And that's on your.
They've been here a year. I said you have to ask that question. They've been here a year. It feels like anyway.
I know, I just want to make sure that you got it down for the record. Turn it over to, uh, Mr. Cress.
Through the chair to Mary or whomever. Where do these monies come from? Is it out of the general fund or does it come out of the senior budget? Where does it come from?
So this would be part of the senior budget, however, the senior budget is the general fund.
Okay. And the next question for, for people who may be looking at this. What are the, um, construction contingency fees? There's ten percent in two different spots here regarding determination and then determination senior center. There's two of them here. Can you explain what those are?
Are you looking at the memorandum?
I'm looking, yes, memorandum, yeah. There's a construction contingency, says ten percent, sixty-eight thousand dollars, and some change. And then at the bottom, it says construction contingency, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and some change.
One's the Civic Center, one's the Senior Center.
Where do those, where do those fees go towards?
So that is just, we put, um, in accordance with our policy for change orders. We have a ten percent contingency allowed on projects so that we can approve those. Um, if there's, you know, like if they're in the middle of something, I can approve those or someone in my staff can approve those. So that's just in, that's the ten percent that's in accordance with that policy that was adopted by the board back actually when Mr. Pearl was here.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
And if it's outside that ten percent threshold, it comes back to the board for approval?
Correct.
Or if there's a change in scope, then it doesn't matter what the percentage is that goes to the board.
Yeah, this is for change orders, not for change in scope.
Okay. We don't have a motion yet. Do we, Ms. Meltzer?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Support. Roll call?
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, quarterly treasures report.
Did you want me to read this or are you guys just giving a, uh, like, like the previous treasurer did? The previous treasurer.
Item number fifteen, quarterly treasures report.
Did you want me to read this?
Did you want Ms. Meltzer to read it?
I'm asking, are you guys, yes. Okay, all right, all right, there we go. That's what I was looking for. During the third quarter of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, October first through December thirty-first, the three-month treasury yield averaged four point four oh percent, declining from four point five one percent in October and falling to four point two, twenty-seven percent in December. Township investments, non-checking and saving accounts rates of return also declined, averaging four point fifty-seven percent and falling from four point seven oh in October to four point four six in December. This rate, however, stayed above the three-month treasury rate, in part due to pooled funds returns and investments with locked-in rates of return certificates of deposit. With uncertainty in the economy, it's unclear when the Federal Reserve will next cut the rate, though another cut is possible. As our longer-duration investments mature, we will continue our search to yield among mostly short-duration compliant vehicles while looking for the right pivot point to shift to longer-term investments that lock in higher returns. Bank deposits are spread across seven institutions in the amount of fifty-seven million, four hundred and thirty dollars and eighty, um, four hundred and thirty thousand, eighty dollars. Yes.
I don't think, probably the narrative is probably the part to focus on. I don't know if we need to do all of that. It's, it's listed for the record.
Sure. And, and the deputy treasurer is at the podium. She may want to be able to sum up. If that's, or no.
Questions from the board? Uh, trustee Cress.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to accept it as presented.
Okay, been moved.
I'll support that.
Supported. Um, come on, somebody's got to have a question for Carolyn. She's sat here all this, all this time.
What do you think about the food truck thing?
Carolyn, thank you for being here. Mr. Treasurer Iello, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
And, uh, there's been a motion and support. Uh, a roll call, please.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Okay. All right. Item number sixteen, approval of the school tax collection agreements.
Per MCL two-one-one-point-four-three, parent four, and parent twelve of the General Property Tax Act and MCL three-eight-oh-point-one-six-one-two of the revised school code, school districts have the option of contracting with local communities for the collection of school taxes. Under these agreements, a per parcel fee is negotiated. The township collects school taxes on the summer bill, then distributes the dollars bi-monthly as they are paid. Clinton Township has traditionally performed this function and is pleased to do so for several reasons. The Clinton Township Treasurer's Office is already statutorily obligated to collect summer taxes on behalf of other taxing authorities. Clinton Township residents then receive only one summer bill rather than multiple bills from varying, various taxing authorities. Schools can be assured that they are receiving their dollars in an efficient manner at a fair cost by an organization committed to meeting all the statutory requirements. As a local community, we recognize the healthy schools are essential to the future of Clinton Township, the region, and all of the state of Michigan. The per parcel fee negotiated for the two thousand twenty-five tax year is four dollars. The Treasurer's Office has negotiated these agreements, and all of them have been signed by the school, by the local school districts. I'm requesting board authorization to approve the two thousand twenty-five tax collection and distribution agreements with Chippewa Valley Schools, Clinton Dale Community Schools, Fraser Schools, Lance Cruz Public Schools, Mount Clements Community Schools, Macomb Community College, Macomb Intermediate School District, and Mount Clements Public Library, respectfully submitted. Dr. Mike Iello, treasurer.
Trustee Cress.
I make a motion to accept it as presented, the approval of the two thousand twenty-five school tax collection agreements.
Second.
Been moved and supported. Uh, so missed debates, or demates. Allow me to ask this. When people pay their summer bill, does Clinton Township keep any of those dollars?
No. So anything that's on your summer tax bill is typically, you're looking at the schools, you're looking at Community College, Mount Clements Public Library, not a single dollar is anything we keep, including any investment interest that we, that accrues on it. That too, at the end of the tax cycle, gets distributed out to all of the different tax entities proportionally.
Okay. I just had to ask you something because you stayed here all that time. We have a motion and support. Um, a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seventeen, request to purchase radios and speakers for fire apparatus.
Honorable board members, the Fire Department would like to request for permission to order two radios and four speakers for our two new engines that are expecting, that we are expecting this August. We would like to purchase the radios and speakers prior to April first, two thousand twenty-five, with the cost to be paid out of the fire vehicle and equipment replacement fund using part of the one point six million budgeted for the engine. The two engines are coming in under the one point six million dollar budget at one million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. So we are under budget by thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. The cost of the radios and speakers are nine thousand, fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents. This is a time-sensitive matter, as they must be shipped to the manufacturer in Wisconsin to be installed by their technicians prior to their delivery. Thank you for consideration in this matter, and we look forward to your response. Please feel free to reach out with any questions or concerns. Charles Van Horalback, deputy fire chief. Did I say his name right? Horalback.
Close enough.
Horalback.
Chief Gallagher is here. Questions from the board?
Mr. Supervisor?
Trustee Metuzak.
I understand completely adding these to the fire truck. Are there other things that need to be added to this fire truck while they're building it, before it's delivered to us?
So we've sat down and discussed this exact question with our apparatus committee. The last meeting we had with our deputy chief, who was present, was that this was the last issue that would need to be addressed physically on the fire engine itself. The rest is supplies that would be mounted on the actual apparatus, and those have, those purchases are in process as well. And those discussions of what those would be. But this is, needs to be done by the technicians at the factory because of the wiring harnesses and intricacies of the devices themselves with the fire engines.
Okay, thank you.
Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Treasurer Iello, supported by trustee King. Further discussion? Or, excuse me, a roll call.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Item number eighteen, Civic Center baseball field restoration.
Dear members of the board, the Department of Public Works is requesting approval for restorations of the Township Civic Center baseball fields, three, four, and five. We are asking for the approval to allow Dura Edge Products DBA Home Field to perform these restorations in the amount of sixty-two thousand, ninety dollars and thirty cents. This is a proposed budget item for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget. Restoration improvements would proceed early spring of this year. The work will include measure and mark field for square and trimming, sod cut, and remove marked areas, perform infield topography, rough grade infield to installation of Dura Edge Classic Infield Mix, and promote positive surface drainage, distribute and install Dura Edge Classic Infield Mix, ending at proper finish grade uniformly apply pro sides, pro slide ES red to surface on newly graded infield and finish groom and drag for play. The township will work in cooperation with Clinton Valley Little League, who has agreed to donate restorations for fields one and two. It is understood that the donation to the township does not give sole or proprietary rights of the field's use to the Clinton Valley Little League. It is our recommendation to award restoration contract to Dura Edge Products DBA Home Field for sixty-two thousand, ninety dollars and thirty cents, and request a waiver of the bid policy. Your cooperation in this matter, in this matter is greatly appreciated. Feel free to contact me with any questions you may have. Respectfully submitted, Scott Kleinfeld, Assistant Superintendent for the Public Works Department.
Questions from the board?
Mr. Supervisor?
Trustee Cress and trustee Metuzak.
Why are we waiving the?
It's my question.
Yeah.
So I'll explain. Um, we've been working hand-in-hand with Clinton Valley Little League, and they went out and tried to get quotes from multiple companies. However, only one company, this company actually provided a quote. Why do they think the multiple companies didn't? It's specialty work. It's baseball diamond work and so forth. So, um, so in order to keep it with the same contractor, with the same work that Little League is going with, we are asking, you know, basically saying, let's use the same contractor. So it's because we only have one quote, and they quote for each diamond is more than the twenty thousand dollars, which is, um, required to go out for bids. So we want to be consistent. It's specialized work. We want to be consistent with Clinton Valley Little League, and then, and use the same contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
No, it doesn't.
No, sorry.
It doesn't make any sense at all. Then we have one bid and they kind of, they pick their own number, so, um, no, it doesn't make sense. Thank you, though.
Trustee Metuzak?
Trustee Cress and I had the same concerns. Um, I guess I understand specialized baseball fields and goodness knows I do not wish to postpone the Little League season. I'm a big baseball person, um, but I'm a little bothered that we don't have quotes.
I, I had a question.
Trustee Wade?
Real quick, that place is packed all the time, and I think it's a great service we provide in the township. I'm just curious, when somebody contacts the township and says, we want to hold a baseball tournament, is there a fee attached to that for them using that, that field, or how does that work?
So Clinton Valley Little League is considered a house team.
Right.
So there is fees that they are charged based on being a house team. But if another organization was to contact us, say, um, a travel team or someone like that, there are fees associated with that. They're in the ordinance. As far as how it works, um, I believe it's a per-day rental, but I don't have those fees right here. But they are in the ordinance.
Okay. Questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
No. But I'll make a motion to approve and the request to, for the Civic Center we feel, our baseball field restorations.
I'll support.
Been moved by clerk Meltzer, supported by trustee Wade. Seeing no further discussion, a roll call.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number nineteen, ratification of contracts for emergency repairs at Heritage Estates.
Dear honorable board of trustees, on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, the Heritage Estates Committee met and discussed the serve pro contract for emergency repairs in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eighty-seven dollars and seven cents. The quote includes restoration for the six water-damaged apartments. Now that demolition and water remediation is complete, time is of the essence to move forward with renovating the units. At the time of the meeting, the insurance claim had not been approved, so the committee determined the best course of action would be to consult with the township insurance provider and township attorney. As such, with the claim's subsequent approval, consultation, and the contract review, the township supervisor, township attorney, and insurance provider were in agreeance to sign the contract to move forward with the restorations as time is of the essence. The Heritage Estates Committee is requesting the board ratify the serve pro contract in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eighty-seven dollars and seven cents. Thank you for your consideration of this matter, sincerely, Heritage Estates Committee.
Questions from the board?
So, I have.
Clerk Meltzer?
So this is approval from something that's already happened?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. Okay, good.
There's more to this, and I think that Ms. Bednar can explain. We actually have a, proceeds available now of roughly two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And that is basically a settlement from the insurance company. The contract is the lower amount, this two hundred and thirty-some thousand dollar contract. That's for the actual repair work. In addition to that, there has been restoration work that occurred immediately after the flood that was basically bringing in and, and getting rid of the water and drying the units out and so forth, and getting rid of items that were destroyed, tearing some, some demolition and so on. But I'll, go ahead, take over.
So this actually goes back to our budget approval. When you noticed, Ms. Hines said that our expenditure was going to be more than our revenue because of our five, a thousand dollar deduction. So the full, um, the full amount is two hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. That includes the drying out of the area. So, um, once we, was discovered, we had to dry out so we could remediate and not get mold and so forth. And then that was approximately twenty-one thousand dollars. We have already received that money from the insurance company. And then the demolition that Mr., um, uh, Mr. Dolan referred to was also taking place. And so that, basically, the difference in numbers has to do with that this two hundred and six, what's coming is two hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. We, that check was issued last week and is in the mail to us. And so that's why we're moving forward with it. That covers the demolition as well as this contract here, which is the renovation.
So the same company that did the demo work is doing the restoration work. That was not the, the, uh, they were, they were brought in initially as a emergency available contractor to do the, because of course it was a flood and we needed someone and they were available. And then they've been moved on to complete this other work.
Trustee Cress?
Can I ask Kenny P.? Can I ask Kenny P. a question? Ken, have we, have we...
Name the names for the record.
Yeah. Yeah. Have we, have we come to a conclusion what the, what the failure was? Was it a freezing? Was it a faulty coupling?
No. It's, the part still has to be sent out for testing to a test lab. The insurance company was going to take care of that, but they haven't moved real quick. The part that broke is locked up.
So, we don't, we don't know if it was freezing or...
No. We're also requesting the engineers, Basso, who designed the system. It was a million-dollar revamping of the whole attic system, suppression system in all four buildings about three years ago.
Are you at all leery that it might be substandard work or something like that? It's going to happen again?
It was, no, it was inspected. Yes, I'm concerned whether the part was damaged by inadequate installation, or was it a bad part by the factory? That's going to be determined by the testing, and also, we're asking Basso to recommend an independent engineer to come out and inspect all the attics. I don't, I don't think that...
Jack, is there a chance we're going to recoup any, any of these monies if it was substandard work or a part that failed? Or are we left on the hook?
Well, the insurance company goes. We're not on the hook.
Yeah, but not, but not our insurance, but their insurance. We, we run their insurance all the time.
The insurance company's responsibility is to go after them.
Okay.
That would reduce our, if they received, subjugated to them, and they put on notice the AEW and the contractor, and, you know, and notice that they could be subject to this because AEW was...
Because our, because our insurance gets quite the workout, and if it could, if it could fall on somebody else...
Well, if they could reduce the loss, our loss ratios by recovering the money, that would be to our advantage.
Okay. But that's still, still possible.
It could take, yeah, it's going to take time to work that out, but we want to know what happened and why. It was one part that was faulty. That system carries air because it's in a winterized section of the attic there, and if the system is needed, it, then the air escapes, the water flows. So, in the past, we had problems with it for 10 years. The old system, the original system that was put in 30 years ago, it was leaking air and causing the compressors to burn out, and the township decided it needed to replace. The system is state-of-the-art. I wouldn't have put it in the attic myself, but that's the way they built it, so we didn't have any choice but to replace it. But the, the problem is, did the fitting go bad, or was it improper installation?
But if it had air in it, you're thinking that there's, there's, one of the, one of the possibilities is that water made its way into the...
It would be condensation, but they drained the system every month.
Okay.
So, it shouldn't have accumulated. It was a horizontal pipe, and the fitting was maybe this large. So, that coupling crimps together with two bolts, and it looks like one totally broke.
And a rubber gasket in there.
Yeah. So, basically, if it had that much water in a freezing atmosphere, it should have expanded horizontally along the pipe because it's an inch-and-a-half pipe. But for it to accumulate and stay there and break, I doubt that happened. And when the contractor showed up, the pipe was already flowing with water, that much water, you know? So, it was, it was impossible to determine if anything was frozen at that point. But we're having it all tested, and we're having the rest of it inspected. We want to know if there's other bad fittings.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl and Ms. Bednar, to that point.
Well, I was just going to say, Mr. Pearl just said, before, he just said it. So, we're investigating it, but also the insurance company, and I know they've already reached out to AEW, who was the architect on it, as well as Basso, you know? So, I know that this is happening and is moving forward into the investigation, but it may take some time.
And Fernco, the contractor.
Yeah, excuse me, Fernco.
Okay. You sit down.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Further questions?
Mr. Supervisor? Just, I really want to acknowledge that six of our residents were really affected by this. Luckily, most of, five of them have found a place with family, although after this many weeks, we all know what it's like to have to stay with your family. And one is in a hotel who is anxious to get out and back home, so I hope we can proceed with all due speed to get these folks back in their houses, in their apartments.
Well, let me just add, I appreciate the work of the committee and Mr. Pearl as a citizen member, with his level of experience, coming together along with our department to get these. You know, the, the insurance company sent, in this case, three adjusters. So, we were scrambling to make sure we get the work done. We're having to wonder if things are going to be compensated or not, but our message from the administration to the insurance company was, we need to get this wet stuff out or else it's mold remediation, and that is going to cost you that much more. So, it was a priority to move as fast as we could, and then we have a, we switch gears to a contractor that is actually approved by the insurance company. And since they're paying the bill, they chose the insurance company. Once we finally got authorization, we moved forward ahead of time to try to get things done, but we did believe that was the right move, given the residents being displaced. Do we have a motion?
No.
I'll make a motion.
I'll support it.
Motion to approve by Trustee Metuzak, supported by Trustee Wade. Roll call.
Trustee Metuzak.
Yes.
Trustee Wade.
Yes.
Trustee Kress.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam.
Yes.
Trustee King.
Yes.
Treasurer Ilo.
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Item number 21. Request approval of agenda preparation amendment.
No. Okay. No. We missed the other heritage.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Landscaping contract, item number 20.
To members of the board...
Landscaping contract for Heritage Estates.
The Department of Public Works is requesting an approval to contract... What?
No.
Okay. To, all right, let me start over. The Department of Public... Okay, ready? Okay. The Department of Public Works is requesting an approval to contract out the landscaping services for Heritage Estates Apartments. Through formidable management, the township received three quotes for completing this work. We are asking for approval to allow J&amp;J Landscaping LLC lowest bid to perform the work in the amount of $22,964.84. The contract would start April 15, 2025, and end December 15, 2025. The work will include lawn maintenance, spring cleanup, flower bed maintenance, trimming, pruning maintenance, fall cleanup, lawn fertilization, grub control, irrigation startup and shutdown, irrigation serve, repair, annual flower installation, and mulch installation. It is our recommendation to award the landscaping contract to J&amp;J Landscaping LLC for $22,964.84 and a waiver of the bid policy. Your cooperation with this matter is greatly appreciated. Feel free to contact me with any questions you may have. Respectfully, Scott Kleinfeld, Assistant Superintendent for the Public Works Department.
Mr. Supervisor.
Trustee Metuzak.
I'm a little confused because it said we have to waive the bid policy, but there is a bid summary page in here.
So, those were not, so those were not bid out, meaning our bid policy says over $20,000. We put on mitten, and we, we go out for bid. These were three quotes received by formidable, and unfortunately, the lowest quote is above the $20,000. So, so that's why. We still have the three quotes, but the, but how the bid policy works is up to $2,000. We can kind of go and use, like, in Amazon, $2,000 to $20,000 would be, we could get three quotes, which is what we did, and above 20 would require us to go out to a formal bid policy.
Okay.
So, we're just asking not to have to do the formal bid policy.
Well, you're not going to have time because we're going to have to start mowing the lawn pretty soon.
Well, that's, that's why we're being transparent and bringing that to you.
So, these are quotes, not bids?
Right.
Right, correct. The manager thought that by getting the quotes, it was going to be under $20,000. It wasn't.
That's where they're hoping.
That's what they were hoping. Prices have gone up.
Well, I would make a motion to approve this and waive the bid policy.
Been moved?
I'll second it.
Supported, moved by Trustee Metuzak, supported by Treasurer Ilo. Roll call.
Trustee Metuzak.
Yes.
Treasurer Ilo.
Yes.
Trustee Wade.
Yes.
Trustee Kress.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam.
Yes.
Trustee King.
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Item number 21. Request approval of agenda preparation amendment.
Do you want me to read this or just speak? Do you want to speak to it? This has been brought forward by Shannon King, trustee.
I can speak to it.
Go ahead.
All right. So, you know, board members, I've, I've come to you previously in previous meetings to talk about us incorporating a different process with our agenda preparation and allowing us to be able to provide not only the agenda, you know, earlier within the, you know, four days earlier, but also incorporating the supplemental background information along with that. Prior to, you know, this meeting, there was some conversation at the last meeting that, you know, Shannon sat down, tried to work this out with the clerk. I sat down with Madam Clerk, and, and we had some conversation, and, you know, part of the conversation kind of got to, you know, is this more of a Shannon thing that, you know, is being, you know, kind of brought to, to the table, or is this something that is really the sentiment of the, you know, of our, of our community and our residents? I know that I personally, going on the campaign trail, this was something that was communicated to me by residents, that this was a point of something that they would like to see. But I didn't want to just rest on conversation and other things, so I did conduct, it was an informal survey, but did conduct a, a survey on Instagram and also Facebook via social media to be able to, you know, target the, our zip codes here within Clinton Township, and got some cursory, you know, rough information based around that, and I supplied that to all the, the board members here to be able to review via email. And really just would ask all of our, of us as board members to, you know, realize that this is not something that costs us additional money. This is not something that is going to be a great expanse of additional time, and that this is something that our residents, as the information that I provided you, this is something that is not just, like, cooked up by myself. This is something that residents would like to be able to see. And so, I would like us to be able to, at least at the very minimum, try to provide this resource in a pilot circumstance, just give it some time to be able to see if we can be able to execute this appropriately and be able to give this to our, our community. But I think this level of, I'm not trying to call anyone out and say someone's done something nefarious previously. I'm not trying to say that this is some type of partisan issue. This is just a resident, our residents deserve this. If we're making decisions and we're giving, you know, we're looking at some of this information, I think it's just something that we can provide them to be able to go along the journey with us. If they have any questions, they'll reach out. We can interact with them, and just move forward from there. I think we just adjust our, you know, our processes and what we're doing and, and make it work. And if we find that there's some big gaps or something that is not appropriate that's happening, we just, you know, we, we bring it back up again because we're malleable. We're not something that's just stuck in stone, and we can review it and have some good conversation and go from that perspective. But I think I've shown that it's not something that's just a Shannon baking the cake, you know, situation that he just wants something to, to fight on. This is something that our residents want, and I would appreciate your consideration to be able to work as one, as one board, to be able to give something to our residents that really relatively costs us nothing. Thank you. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to pass this amendment.
Motion by Trustee King, supported by...
Trustee Metuzak.
Trustee Metuzak. All right. Discussion. Clerk Meltzer.
Most everything that he's got in his document, we do, we already do this, but just so you, the public knows, we have approximately two weeks or less than to develop the, because we have two weeks, to develop the agenda because we have two weeks in between, as for the most part, for agendas. Sometimes there's three weeks, sometimes it's one week, like it was recently. But this is definitely a working document, and there is ample opportunity for the public to contact the clerk's office or, or the other department heads. It isn't just about the clerk's office. And we do have to follow the Open Meetings Act, and we exceed the requirements of the state's requirement. We post the agenda on the Wednesday prior to the board meeting, when it's actually supposed to be just required 24 hours ahead of time. And I, you know, we know that we want the public to be aware of what we might be discussing, but the document, the supporting documentation under those titles is a work in progress. So, if we, you know, put the agenda item on, if we have our agenda completed on the Wednesday before the board meeting, the supporting documentation may still be in the works, may be coming. And so, as such, we do, we do post that, and through our social media, our, our agenda management process, which I implemented when I became the clerk with support of our board. So, this is a great opportunity for transparency, and it gets the information out much earlier than what it ever did previous to my being here as the clerk. So, that is a good thing that we've implemented and will continue to do that. But just know that, you know, once we post that information on the agenda, the following supporting documentation comes in around Friday. Sometimes it comes in earlier. It might, but to say that there has to be a mandate is really going to stop the progress of what we are doing here in the township. It would, I would tell you right now, if we had to implement certain things that we put a stopgap on, half of this agenda's item wouldn't be in here. We'd be, we'd have, they'd have to wait till two weeks later. There's really no reason to make people wait, and businesses to wait, and our department heads rely on an efficient process, and I think I've given that to them in this, in this process. We really have not had any complaints. I've never had a, a resident come to me saying, we need to have these things more sooner than later. And I noticed that the survey that Trustee King put out was three questions, and your statement said that 69.6% of the residents want more township details. That is not true. It's 69.6% of the people you surveyed, which were 200 people. I think it was 204, and not everybody answered all of those. So, I think it's disingenuous to, you know, print inaccurate information and then also present it as though this is something that is a transparency issue. It is not. We are very transparent in, in the clerk's office and throughout the township as a whole, and I welcome anyone, anybody that wants to know more information about the agenda items to contact our office or the department heads of which, from which the agenda item is initiated from.
Supervisor.
Trustee Metuzak.
I fail to understand how, when most of the agenda attachments come to us on Friday, they cannot be published to the public on Friday.
They have been. You're just not paying attention.
No, they have not been. I have called you on Monday morning asking for attachments.
They may not be ready. As I said, it's a working document.
Then our department heads or whomever need to get their stuff in sooner. I think it's wrong that the public doesn't have access, well, I think it's wrong, they don't have access to a set agenda until, I don't know, Monday right before the meeting, and I think that all the attachments that arrive to you should be put up immediately so that people can see them. That's all.
As soon as I get them, we are, we put them up. It's just that it's not a complete packet. Yeah, it's a work in progress, as I stated.
Life is a work in progress.
Yes, it is.
Come on. And we can change things. Yes, it was bad before you got here. Yes, you have made things better. We can make it better still. It's okay to do that.
All right. Trustee King and Trustee Wade.
Madam Clerk, I just want to say that, again, I appreciate your efforts. It's, at some point, this has either been seen as a King versus clerk, you know, kind of issue. It's, it's, it's not. It seems to be something that you take with, with defense. This is just an opportunity for us to be able to just continually, as you mentioned, to continually improve. You improve things when you came in. I just, this is something that's came to my attention that residents have brought up and I'm fighting for those residents to be, be able to see that change, which I believe is to be an improvement, to just enhance what we've already put out in front. So again, it's not a, it's not a personal attack. It's not to say that we have to completely revamp everything that's happening within the clerk's office or within the agenda component, but this is just something that we, I believe, can all just continually improve, continually, you know, look to adjust, be flexible. If this is something that would appease and, and, and not just appease, but give our residents something that they just, quite frankly, I believe they deserve, I don't know why we wouldn't try this. I don't know why we would stand in a way of being able to provide it to them. If, if, if we give this to our residents and only, you know, only one resident chooses to utilize it, it's still worth it to be able to provide that to them so that they have that choice to be able to utilize it and access it or not. But for us to just say, well, you know, we've got, this would change when we have to get to this, or this would change when we would have to do all this. Yes, it would change and we would have to be changing, but this would be what we're actually here to do, which is to be able to serve our residents. Otherwise, if there, if there would be no need for a township or no need for local or state or federal government, if people didn't exist that we were trying to serve. So I'm not trying to be combative. I'm not trying to be pushy. I'm not trying to stand on some type of high moral ground and look at my nose at anyone. I'm just, at a basic component, I just want us to be able to serve our residents on something that's simple, that doesn't cost us more money, that individuals have stated that they would like us to be able to do. And I think we could do it all as a board. We've, I mean, we couldn't align on the board rules. We can align on a number of different things, unfortunately. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to be able to do that as one. I'm not naive to think that everybody's going to vote in unison or be able to do that today, but I wish that we could because I think this is something that's very simple for us to be able to do.
Trustee Wade.
Real quick, and I appreciate everything that's been put forward here. What, I guess what kind of strikes me the wrong way with this document, and I kind of alluded to this in the past with you, it says, "In order to promote transparency," which is giving the perception that we're not being transparent. Your issue is a time issue, correct?
In part, yes.
I, I don't understand the transparency because the document that you would like her to put out on a Wednesday is the exact same document she's putting out on Monday or Friday, whenever she puts it out. Okay, Monday, whatever day it is. There's no difference in the document. So this argument about transparency, I just, it just really rubs me the wrong way because it gives people such a bad perception. And I saw some of the things that were written about the clerk and I think it's, it's very unfair. She's being as transparent as she can be. Now, you might not like the timing of it and, and I, I think that's the crux of what this is, but we're being transparent. And I think it's kind of a kicking rear end to all of us when you say you're trying to promote transparency. We have transparency. You just don't like the timing of it. That's my perception of it. And the other thing you said was, "We couldn't align on board rules." We did. We did align on board rules. I think we implemented, implemented something. We, we adopted, we not only follow the state rules, but we follow rules that are very similar to other communities. So I, I don't think that's a fair statement to make, but I think the point that has to be made here is, this is all done electronically. You know, we're in the age of IA where everything is updated immediately and it, it sounds like, and if I'm reading this correctly, you want the agenda locked four days before. If I can go through the chair to ask him that.
Mr. Wade, I'm, I'm, I'm very flexible and, and did try to, you know, you mentioned previously to sit down with the clerk. I, I did that. I'm very flexible in the wording, so if the, if, if the word transparency is inflammatory or by any way makes someone feel as if they themselves are not part of trying to be in a part of a transparent process, then let's change that. Again, we can be flexible or amicable to that. I didn't write anything negative about the clerk. I just simply wrote what happened in the conversation that we had and I tried to do something based upon hearing that feedback. I didn't want it to be something that I was presenting to the clerk, the board, or the rest of our residents, what was, what was happening. This is a real unofficial poll. I just wanted to give you, I just wanted to give you some of that information. This was an unofficial poll, but this is something that was sent to our zip code and, you know, that we were trying to get some, what I hope to be residents' opinions.
And, and again, I appreciate the effort, but for me, I, I walked a lot of subdivisions like you did and other people did. And I've talked to a couple of other of the board members sitting right up here. Not one of them has gotten a complaint about the agenda. I know I didn't. And I've talked to a couple of others up here and they haven't either. And I, I believe when, when Ms. Meltzer says that it's a, a working document, I, I would like to concur with that. Now, could we try to maybe get things on an attachment earlier? I, I thought maybe if you two sat down, you could come halfway on that or come to some agreement, or maybe you could give some constructive points of view and we would come, come away with something. That was my whole thing because I have a lot of respect for both of you. And I know you both want the right thing. That was my whole intention of you two collaborating on something. That, that's what my goal was. And again, I do think it's a working document and I think in the electronic age or AI age or whatever you want to call it, information is received and, and I like the fact that she updates it.
So can we, you know, chair?
Yes.
In the spirit of being flexible, can we, and I did present this as well previously, but I presented to the board, instead of the four days that's mentioned here in this document, can we look at doing it the Friday before, which would be like approximately 48 hours? Could we, could we do that? Do it the Friday prior to our Monday meetings?
That's four days.
Well, the, well, the Friday prior to our Monday meeting, so if we had it, you know, say for example, this last Friday, it'd be available Saturday, Sunday, people have?
There, it is available. It is available.
The agenda is, however, the supplemental background information is often not there. And so I'm asking for the sup, I'm not talking about, and I'm not trying to be rude when I say this, I just want to be clear because it, it keeps coming back that it's there. And the supplemental information, documentation is not available often until the Monday morning, the Monday prior to our meeting today. So I, I'm not trying to be dismissive or rude to you, but I just want to be clear. If we could have the supplemental information available with, aligned with the agenda, available on Friday by close of business, could we look to try that to be able to give that to our residents? And I, I think that's reasonable.
I'm trying to be very flexible here in not, you know, facilitate discussion. Trustee Kress.
I'd like to thank Clerk Meltzer and her staff for all the hard work they put in, especially when there's an agenda with 26 items. Puts me in a unique spot today because my, I'm going to have to postpone my item 23 because my attachment didn't make it in the packet today. So I'm voluntarily, when it comes to my, to my, my item, I'm going to voluntarily postpone it because it wasn't in there. And it might've been, might've been my error. I don't know exactly what happened, but in, in an instance like this, for transparency so everybody can look at it, this will be available well in advance of the next meeting. And like I said, I don't want to place blame and, and because it could've been my fault, could've been computers, whatever. But I would just like to say that they, they, on a, on a 26 agenda item day, there's a lot to do and, and I think they do the best they can.
I would like to see this at least out by Friday. But I also recognize that oftentimes we're working on deadlines, we're working on a lot of different things. And so trying to get all of the subsequent material into the package can be a tremendous challenge for the clerk's office.
Just, to clarify, that's not, it's not a, it's not a problem for me. It's just, if I don't have it, I can't put it in there. That's all I'm saying. It's not a problem for me at all.
Absolutely, I understand. All of our directors are trying to get stuff in. You know, is there something that we could turn on, flip a switch that says, boom, as soon as the backup is added? Because I see the backup, but I'm using the Civic Plus system. I'm not going to the website to access it. But I would have no problem if we could flip a switch and then as soon as the backup's added, it ports out to the website. I don't know, like, help me understand.
It does do that. It does that.
Okay.
It's just that if everything isn't there, it can change. I know that trustee Wade said that, um, once the documents are in there, they don't change. That is not necessarily true. It generally is true, but it could, there could be, there's always exceptions to every rule, right? So the issue is, do we want to slow the progress of, you know, accomplishing, you know, what the public's asking of us, what our department heads are asking of us? Do we want to slow that down? I hope that's not the case. As long as you guys understand that those documents might be added to, you know, leading up to Monday's board meeting, you know, that packet information, you know? And, and the last two meetings, the last, leading up to the last two meetings, the documents were available to the public on Friday. It's just nobody pays attention, honestly. It's just silly because people are busy with their lives.
Well, I'm not getting into Civic Plus, so I'm paying attention all the way along.
And we have been elected to do this job and we are doing it well. You know, again, I'm open for constructive criticism. I'm open for building a better mousetrap. I always say that when I'm teaching elections because things change and things have changed and that's why we have adapted and made those changes better, to, to make it more transparent, to make it more accessible. Again, no one has an issue on this board, none of us, and neither does anybody in my office have an issue giving information to the public. This, these are their documents. This is the public's document. This is their domain. So it isn't that I object to this. It's just, it's a work in progress and these documents aren't always readily available. So we can do it on Friday. We don't have a problem.
This is not a town hall.
But let me just ask you this.
This is a business meeting of the board members.
Supervisor?
So it's important that the board members get all of the information as soon as possible.
It's true.
I would love to see as much of the background information put out as soon as possible.
That's fine. And just so you know.
That is what I'm looking for. Is Friday?
That's already happening.
Is Friday a better day?
Is Friday is, is, is what we do do. We do that already with the board and we can add, you know, we can. But, well, and the public too. It's just that the public doesn't really, just like I said, the last two meetings, I said, make sure they're out, it's out there on Friday. I didn't hear anybody, I still, I didn't hear anybody call me and say, thank you for putting that information out there and making it accessible. Nobody even knows that we did it.
All right. I would be happy to direct the directors that report to the supervisor to get this information prior to Friday.
Okay.
And have it out by Friday afternoon, close of business.
Sure.
Uh, trustee King, are you amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to?
But just, just, I need to clarify one thing. This whole thing has changed. The, the line of, of, of the, you know, in terms of what they're asking me to meet has changed. They first started complaining and saying, we don't know how to access the, the agenda. And then I met that, you know, that with showing them several times. They didn't do it today because we had so many other things on the agenda, but I had, I went to the podium and then I did it here, explained to the public how easy it is to access. And then they all said, oh, no, no, we weren't talking about access to the agenda. We want the, the packet of information. So what I'm telling you is quit moving the line in terms of what hoops I have to jump through. If Friday is, is the magic date, that's fine, but I will tell you, one of the things that might result in is the department head or a, a person in the public may not get to, they may have to wait two weeks to do something and get approval or not, just because there's this criteria that really isn't, isn't business friendly. It isn't worker friendly. We have a lot of information that's available. Public really is trusting us. They elected us to do this job and we're doing it. They don't need to know every little detail and quite frankly, most people that make comments about what we do in my office, including my colleagues here on this board, don't know what you're talking about. And reciprocally, I don't know your field of, of industry as well. So I try to respect your, you know, your, your area of expertise and stay in my lane. I say that a lot. Please, people, stay in your lane, but I will ask the public.
Clerk Meltzer, we've been through this a lot.
Well, you know what? He keeps bringing it up. You don't seem to object to that.
What I am, what I am suggesting is a friendly amendment that says, close of business on Friday, backup, background is added. My question?
I thought you were going to ask your staff first. Why don't you ask your staff first if that's doable for them and if they prefer that?
My question to the policymaker, trustee King, is what happens if it's not there by Friday? If the background is not there? What happens?
I get hit with a wet noodle. I don't know.
So that's what I'm thinking. There's not an enforcement provision on this. So we have two ways to respond to that. We could either say it automatically comes off the agenda or we as a board could vote to place it on the agenda because we believe it's a priority. And even though the background wasn't out there on every single agenda item, we could prospectively vote and say, we want it on.
But that doesn't appear to be transparent. We, you know, we want, if you're, if you're going to put it on last minute where nobody gets it.
Clerk Meltzer? I, if we're getting more information out, I think that is the intent.
That's fine. I haven't, it's no more work for me. It is, I've heard that also being said, that this is hard for me. It is not. It's, it's up to the department heads and the public that wants to put something on the agenda if they have it on by that deadline.
I'm looking for a compromise position here that provides the flexibility that the township needs and make sure that we get as much information out there to the public as possible. And so I'm suggesting friendly amendments on two fronts. One, make every effort to get all of the information out on, all the background information out by Friday afternoon.
We do that.
And push that out to the public. And whatever is not there, we have to vote to add it to the agenda if the background isn't there.
Okay, so.
And because then?
Let me tell you how that's going to create a problem because now I've got to chase around everybody. Uh-uh, not doing it. Not doing that.
So that's a discussion, not, not.
So why don't we have a discussion in budget ways and means?
Anything your office does is not a great discussion.
Yep.
This is a good discussion.
Let's have, let's have a discussion in budget ways and means on this issue. I can explain in better detail. The public is welcome to come. It's an open meeting. All of you that were, are so concerned about this issue, I'm sure will be there. The whole 204 people that you interviewed, I'm sure will be there. And then we can talk about what works, what doesn't work.
We have a staff?
I, I would like us not to support this today and then let's do it.
We have a staff meeting every Friday. At the staff meeting, we can easily decide, hey, do we have the background on this? If not, why not? And then send something out to the board, hey, it's coming. Here's what the holdup is.
I ask that this be postponed or just not approved. It's already, there's already a motion, so I don't want to ask for another motion. There's a motion and a second. My colleagues don't support it.
And, uh.
Friendly amendments have been what?
Friendly amendments are of two.
You said, you said it had been accepted?
No, just one motion. Just one motion has been.
By the motion maker and the support.
Yeah. We just have one sec, one vote, we have one motion and a second.
We have one motion and a second.
Right.
And I asked the sponsor if he'd accept it as a friendly amendment and he said yes. And the sponsor agrees by nodding her head yes. So the changes are, to review them, that the information go out, all of the background, everything that we have goes out by Friday. Close of business.
I understand, but you haven't spoken to your staff on that yet.
Then, then whatever is not in the background that can be produced by Friday, we then vote to add it to the agenda if it's a priority item that we feel like we have to address.
It's, it's, that's going to be adding more work for me and phone calls and a back and forth.
Well, but that happens anyways.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. It doesn't happen that way. It's very efficient right now. It's very, very efficient. I'll post it on Friday. That's it. And whatever's in there is in there.
I, I think.
I, I think.
I wish that we would just postpone this. I mean, vote no on it, please. I support.
I think, and, and this is just my opinion, if you, you're saying it documents it under by Friday, that it be removed from the agenda.
No, I'm not saying that.
Unless it's important.
Everything's important.
Is that, is that how you, I don't wanna put words in your mouth.
I'm saying, I'm saying we vote at the board meeting to add it to the agenda if the board determines it needs to be on the agenda.
So, there, there could be five or six items we're gonna be voting on whether to put them on the agenda.
Correct.
But at the same time, the public will, will not have seen that.
Correct.
The attachment, so that's pointless.
Correct. But it's up to the board to make that judgment call, and that's what you're elected to do.
Not really. The clerk is the one that does this. And you guys, again, stay in your lane, folks, please. This has worked for 13 years I've been here. Stay in your lane, for heaven's sakes.
Public participation. Mr. Bouchelle.
I.
Miss, uh, oh, I'm sorry. I'll get back to you, trustee Wade.
As a resident who does know and has known for many years how to look up the civic clerk agendas and the attachments, I would say that the clerk made one really good point right at the beginning of everything. He said, she said, businesses shouldn't have to wait. Well, I'm sorry, homeowners should, and condo owners, should not have to get information that directly affects their properties and their lifestyle less than 12 hours before the meeting. And there again, civic clerk, the, the type A that you guys get, you're getting these attachments long before the residents. And that's, I, in fact, I have proposed two different times in the last few meetings saying, don't look at your part, look at what the citizens look up. And it's not there. And I think that, uh, anything, with you, when you're voting on something that might cost a million dollars, if the documentation for it isn't available on Friday, I can't imagine how you can, you know, I don't think anybody is gonna make a million dollar decision based on from Monday morning at eight o'clock, with less than 12 hours.
Unless they've had, well, you know what? I'm not gonna do this.
No, I'm just saying. I'm just saying. It just, it just makes sense that the, you know, there again, and that, this is a point that I made that the clerk said is nothing. When the documentation is on the class A part of the, that you all get, you can all see this stuff, somebody has to poke a button to make sure it's not on the citizens' view of that stuff. And so, that is more work to make the button.
Again, this is not true. That's how it works.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchelle.
And, and thank you, well, I'm waiting for the, I, I'm sorry, I got interrupted by the clerk, you know, there again. Uh, she's kinda mouthy, but, um, the, uh.
Mr. Bouchelle, don't act through it.
It's just, it's, well, it's, it's, it's what she did to me. She, she, she agreed too, that she's mouthy, you know? That's a, it's a matter of, she just said she agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Bouchelle.
There again, I, I think it is very important. I think that this board, anybody who, on this board who votes against having the information that you're voting on on Monday, not to be on the, in the, available to the citizens on Friday, to just say that people that are at work, while they're at work, eight thirty in the morning on Monday, they have to look at the agenda then and, and with the, the, the supporting documentation to support their homes. That is ridiculous. You have it for all weekend, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchelle.
And there again, Mike, that's fine.
We have another person, public participation, Leona, or Leah?
Leonella.
Leonella, I knew, I was, I was close.
Hi, thank you. Leonella, we're three five six nine five, Blair Moore, Clinton Township. Uh, maybe I'm not understanding, but whoever sends an attachment, why don't you go in and make sure that your attachment shows, go to the outside, the way the people on the outside have to get in there and see if it's there? And if it's not, let her know. But everybody's system, you know, depends on what people are getting into their systems. It might be slow. I don't know. I hate computers.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, trustee Wade.
Yeah, just, uh, and, and maybe I'm overstepping what's already been suggested here, but somebody mentioned, I can't remember who it was, to go back and maybe talk about it at budget ways and means, and whatever information can be put on there by a Friday, you do that, but don't have it so rigid that if it's not on there by a Friday that we have to scrap it, because there's too many moving parts in this township. There's too many things happening. I think if the clerk, and I trust she would, makes a very concerted effort, like she says she has, to get stuff on there on Friday, the attachments, then I think we should try to work at, at her word on that.
Yep.
And at least we're, we're coming forward some way. Uh, but I do understand her point, and if I misspoke earlier, things can change from a Friday to a Monday, because other information is discovered, uh, maybe information that somebody thought they had, they, whatever, it could be a million different things, but I think the way we could resolve this is to really go to budget ways and means, and whatever information or attachments that she's able to provide, she make a good faith effort, I, I believe she would, I, I consider her in high integrity, and I think she would do that, but to put a mandate on, and, you know, if it's not on by a certain day, we scrap it, I, I'm, I'm against that.
So, trustee Wade, if I could clarify, what we're suggesting with the friendly amendment is that we don't scrap it, but that we place it on the agenda and we vote to include it.
Okay.
When we vote on Monday to approve the agenda. That way, you're answering based upon a number of different factors. The level of importance that it's been placed, the communication that you receive from your directors, and the proprietary nature of it, and a whole host of things. You're saying, yes, even though the background wasn't here, most of it was, and on this item, I think it rises to the level of needing to be addressed as soon as possible.
But with, with all due respect.
Okay.
We would have an hour debate on what's an important issue. Some per.
No. We didn't, because, because it's not a debate.
Well.
On what is or is not on the agenda.
Somebody might think, you know, the $75 fee at a food truck is important because they don't want the PTO to have to pay for it. That may be important to one person, and it may be not that important to somebody else, so I think we're opening up a whole 'nother can of worms there.
Well, trustee Wade, I, I disagree with that because when we vote on approving the agenda, and we just voted today to remove items from the agenda, there was no debate on that. Our parliamentarian has issued a ruling to say that, hey, anybody makes a motion, the motion was separated, there was no debate, we simply voted. That's it. So, doesn't take up that much time. It didn't today. Uh, trustee Kress.
Uh, thank you for bringing that up. I'm, I'm in a unique situation again today, because I'm gonna circle back to the toolbox. If Monday comes and you don't want something on the agenda, like my item 24 and 25, you voted to take my item off. So, if you don't think the public was accurate, adequately informed, didn't get the attachments, there you go. You can, you can call for a vote to have something removed because you don't think the public, um, had enough notification or the stuff wasn't there. I, I'm, I'm telling you, the toolbox isn't, isn't empty. Um, I, I, I take Kim at her word. I mean, I understand that everything goes on Civic Plus on Friday, and it sounds like she's gonna make her best efforts to, to have everything accessible that she has, you know, at her disposal. Um, I, I just, I, I think we're, we're beating a dead horse, and, and I, I'm all for transparency. Um, but, and I, and I hope you run for clerk next time, and, and I hope you can, you can get everything satisfactory the way you want it. But the way it is now, we have, we have all the tools we need to, uh, to move forward and take things off if we don't think that we've been adequately notified or we don't like it, like in this case, in my case, 24, 25. Thank you.
Mister.
Just for clarification, you guys, it's not me that puts on the stuff on the agenda. I mean, if it's my item, yes, but every department head puts it on the agenda. It's them putting the information on. It's not me putting it on. It's them.
Thank you, Ms. Maltzer.
That's why I want you to consult.
As chair of budget ways and means, I am loathe to have this discussion again. We've now discussed it six times at least.
Yeah.
The clerk, I don't wanna be lectured by the clerk again. I think she could do it better. I think she could do it different. I think, I will trust that she makes her best effort to make all the attachments she has available on the public website on Friday. We are not discussing this again, I am sorry, because it's going nowhere. And there cannot be agreement because the clerk refuses to negotiate? That's fine, but it's ridiculous that we take any more time discussing this.
I second that.
Roll call.
Trustee King.
Yes.
Trustee Matuzak.
No, uh, yes.
Trustee Wade.
No.
Trustee Kress.
No.
Supervisor Gilliam.
Yes.
Trustee, whoops, hang on, I got that wrong.
Treasury.
I'm sorry, Treasury Aiello.
No.
Clerk Maltzer, no. Motion fails.
Okay. Item number twenty.
Two.
Two, request approval to establish a Clinton Township sponsorship and marketing committee.
There's a purpose and goals submitted. Um, this proposal aims to create a sponsorship and marketing committee to find out how to get sponsorships that can bring in more revenue for township projects and services. The committee will make sure that the sponsorships are done appropriately with taste and that they are in line with the community's values to help fund improvements without overburning residents. The committee will design sponsorship opportunities that suit the spirit of the township and are advantageous to the community. They will guarantee that sponsorship revenues are utilized for the improvement and preservation of township services, design a systematic way of assessing sponsorship proposals, introduce a pilot study at Prince Drury Park to determine the effectiveness before extending it to other areas. This is, this is, do you guys want me to read this whole thing? It's.
No.
Three pages long.
Uh, trustee King, uh, please, uh, speak to the agenda item if you see fit.
Sure. Uh, just real quick summary. Want to be able to form a committee for us to be able to have a standardized process on how we go about, um, uh, you know, having additional sponsorship opportunity revenue to come into, uh, the township, uh, so that we can reinvest back into our communities, back into the different areas. Uh, the pilot, the pilot, uh, program I'd like to be able to start would be to focus on Prince Drury Park, uh, be able to look at tasteful sponsorships of fields, of our pavilion, um, maybe the parking structure, different things that nature, basketball court, and be able to find ways that we can, um, be able to highlight great organizations, great companies, you know, great initiatives, and be able to hopefully take some of that revenue and be able to reinvest that back into, uh, you know, the, the different departments and different areas of, uh, you know, of the township. And from an advisory standpoint, I know that there's, uh, sponsorships and things that are already going on right now, um, you know, for like Parks and Rec and, and our seniors group. We're looking to take those, you know, departments in as advisory, so they could help advise us on making sure that it's done appropriately, it's not getting in the way of certain, um, you know, events that already take place within the township, and maybe they, we, by partnering and having them as an advisory, we can find ways to expand this and be able to make it, uh, you know, hopefully make it even more robust and more opportunities for us to be able to utilize that revenue.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve, supported by.
I'll support.
Supported by trustee Matuzak. Discussion, board members.
So.
Uh, excuse me, clerk Maltzer.
Just a quick question. A lot of what I've read on here has already been done, and I do think that, um, the, you know, whatever ideas come up, I like the idea of marketing, you know, uh, coming up with new ideas, and I think trustee, uh, King came up with a great idea about, um, you know, the signs, like, like how you see, like, on a hockey game or you see in basketball, you know, the local businesses supporting. I love that idea. I think that's great. Um, I don't know that you have to have a specific committee to do it. I think that your idea, you ran with it, you should run with it and go with it, um, but if that's what you want, a committee, um, but again, a lot of this stuff we do, and most of the department heads can work with, see, you know, any of us on ideas that we have, and they're, they're willing to work with it, um, but, um, yeah, just that, it's pretty much already done. Duplicate.
Further discussion.
I would like.
Uh, trustee Wade.
Yeah, I, I would like to compliment trustee King too. I think I told him a couple times, I think it's a great concept. Um, I, I would only recommend that maybe you utilize, like, Parks and Rec, because they kinda have a template already, is going out and getting sponsors for events. My only concern, and I think I've told you this, I'm kind of a, I think what sets Clinton Township apart from all the other communities around here is Clinton Township's history. And I hate to get away from that. I was upset when they did away with the traditional township logo we had and went to this new modern one. Uh, and, and, and speaking with, and I know you said you wanted to do a pilot, pardon me, with Prince, Prince Drury Park. My only worry about that is, um, I, I don't want the Prince Drury name to kinda be pushed to the background, because as all of us know who study the history of the township, uh, Prince Drury was a very innovative person. I believe he was the first black school board member in Michigan. There's a lot of history there, and I just wouldn't want that to get overrun by Randazos or Nino Savagios or whatever, because I think that would be a disservice, and that's just, just, just my opinion. Uh, so, I would, I, I think you're on the right track, and I applaud you for heading down that road to generate revenue. I just don't know if we need a separate committee, because like I said, we kinda have a template there with Parks and Recs and, and all the other events we do where they have great sponsors, but, uh, I am, I'm glad you've kinda started this initiative.
Trustee Matuzak.
I think a committee is actually important, because we have Parks and Rec getting sponsorships, we have seniors getting sponsorships, now we're thinking about, is there a way to, you know, name the dog park or whatever? I think bringing all of that synergy together and saying, because you don't want three people hitting up a single business, so I think some coordination is helpful, um, and maybe even a little more coordination than we've had between Parks and Rec and seniors. I mean, they work well together, but I think, I think somebody looking over and establishing some, some policies, uh, and maybe discussing, uh, you know, the rates, people, I mean, are we just going ask for a donation? Are we asking for a specific amount? I mean, there's sort of fundraising involves some organization, and I think, uh, forming a small committee to get that going, I think would be helpful, so we're not crossing wires and stuff.
Trustee Kress.
Thank you. Um, I, I applaud your, 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 your effort and, and the thought you put into this. Um, I don't, I don't see the taxpayers realizing any savings from this. Uh, we already have money in the budget for our ball fields and that sort of thing. If, if we were on hard times and we needed to keep our, our facilities in, in good shape and that sort of thing, I can see that being a time to go looking for money, but if we were to get money for a ball field, that's why we pay taxes. We pay taxes to care for our parks and, and that sort of thing. I'm concerned that if, that if we, if we go out and get additional monies, then, then, I don't wanna use the term flush with cash, but we're gonna have an excess amount that was already earmarked to do that work. So, um, I, I don't have a problem with, like, with, with, with Mr. Wade said, um, you know, mirroring the, the Parks and Rec and, and maybe getting some sponsors for stuff, but the, the Parks and Rec and maybe getting some sponsors for stuff, but relying on them, because that's, I think that's what it'll end up being, is that, is if we, if we get a XYZ company to sponsor the ball fields this year, I think those, the monies that we set aside will get lost somewhere. And if they don't come through with the monies, there'll be a shortfall. I just, I just seen it being problematic, and we pay enough taxes that, that we should be able to take care and provide nice things for our, for our residents. That's it, thank you.
Trustee King.
Appreciate the, the comments. Mr. Wade, I'll just address yours first. The, the goal of the committee would be to make sure that we have a board member liaison to be on and to make sure that we're working all together in unison so that way we could make sure that we are being tasteful and we are being, you know, very mindful and purposeful and... Sorry, it's some background noise, just trying to talk here, sorry. But just trying to be very purposeful and make sure that we're trying to provide, I think, a, a good pilot program with Prince Drury Park. Again, to your point, not to make this into Vegas strip, but to really be able to do some things tastefully and be able to do it in a, in a way that's uniform and standardized. But I, but I hear you, and, and we definitely would want to be able to move forward in that direction. Mr. Kress, just to be able to touch on what you're mentioning, understand where you're, where you're coming from with that. You know, when we, when we first sat down and we, we took office, one of the first things that we did was have that capital projects budget conversation and just look at different things as far as capital projects that we are looking to do with, or our departments are looking to do within the township within a, a five-year span. You know, having opportunity to be able to get, bring in additional revenues not realized as part of the, the budget could allow us to be able to reach those milestones faster and be able to provide amenities to our residents in, in a way that maybe we were projected to do it in three years or four years. Now we have an opportunity to be able to do it within a year or a year and a half, or it could be able to allow us relief on certain aspects, you know, of our budget that we could use the general fund monies to, to put somewhere else that comes up. So I, I, I would personally, I would like us to be in the opportunity where we had more flexibility within our budget to be able to provide more amenities or services and be able to reinvest in the community. And I know that's not what you're saying, I'm not trying to make it into that, but I, I, I think that would give us a, a unique opportunity to be able to do some things for our residents and for our community a little bit differently and maybe in a better way.
Okay, if I may, um, I got you, Sam. I have a Parks and Rec director, I have a Parks and Rec assistant director, I still have a Parks and Rec committee. I have a planning director, I still have a DDA committee. Committees involve the citizens, they help guide decision-making, and they seek involvement. Anybody comes with a new initiative, whether director, a resident, who's going to do it? So what are we going to do? Who's going to do it? Who's going to be making decisions? Who's taking responsibility for what portions of it? And I think those are good things for a committee to decide. So I'll be supporting this, Mr. Bushell. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wade, or trustee Wade.
Yeah, just kind of a follow-up. I would, I would really, when you're talking about Prince Drury Park, were you talking like getting a sponsor for the Quinn Road reunion? Or you're talking about like naming after a building? Is that what you're looking at?
No, I, I'd be looking at, for example, they have a, a basketball court there, right? So it'd be great to maybe look at getting a sponsor to be able to help sponsor, maybe a, look at some tasteful signage that could be up by that basketball court that, you know, with that revenues or the sponsorship dollars that come in through that, we could use to be able to pave over the, the basketball court or be able to provide additional benches and seating. Bleachers have come up in the Prince Drury Park committee meetings, for example, that we could provide those. Those things aren't currently, like a bleacher per se is not currently within our, our, our budget right now. Given that flexibility to be able to reinvest with like a sponsorship dollars could allow us to be able to do that.
Through the, through the chair to Mr. King. Who is going to be the one that says this is what the money's going to be used for? Is it going to be that committee? Is it going to be the township board? Who's going to be the one that makes that decision? That, that's kind of what I'm concerned about because in your, in your world, you, you raised $25,000 this summer over there for various things, and then someone says, well, I, you know, the police department needs, you know, new whistles, or, you know, I'm just being facetious. Who, who's going to make that call? Is it going to be dedicated back to Prince Drury Park? Is it going to be used for something township-wide?
Committees are recommended bodies.
But is, 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 is the township board going to be the final one that says, yes, that's where we want that money spent? That, that's kind of my loophole here.
In, in fashion, we would, we would work very similarly to our existing boards where we would be recommending, you know, the expenditure to, to this board. And then within that board, the, the board would have the opportunity to be able to make the decision on where those monies are going. The recommendation is to put it back into, in most instances, but, you know, could be different, but the idea would be that we reinvest into, you know, the, the site or the area, so the site of the sponsorship.
So the, the...
Because right now, we're talking about a pilot, so the pilot would be Prince Drury.
But what I'm saying is that those monies that are raised, the township board is going to be the one that says this is where that money's going.
Yes.
Is that the way we all understand it?
Yes.
Further discussion from the board. Just... Trustee Matusak.
I know, I'm sorry. I would envision trustee Wade's point that if, you know, the, we can convince the Detroit Pistons to donate, I don't know how much bleachers cost, $3,000 for bleachers at Prince Drury Park, that would come to us and we would say it's for Prince Drury Park. I mean, I, I tend to think less in cash and more in things. But it could be either cash or things, but that's how I would sort of envision it, whatever raise got to, or whatever project's got to come back.
Folks, we're making policy here at the board table.
Yeah.
This is the reason why we have committees. Committees actually work out these details and bring a better recommendation to the board to actually vote on ones, I's are dotted, T's are crossed. We've engaged everybody, we've talked with everybody, and we have sort of, ideas are ready. And we're making policy here at the board table, and that means we have really long meetings to do that, and we start asking questions and try to dive into the details. And it's maybe the appropriate place, but...
Yeah, we are a delivered body.
We are a delivered body, but we should be acting on recommendations. So with that...
Who's going to be on the committee?
So I'm looking for...
Trustee King.
A, a board, a board liaison. I'm looking for, you know, two business representatives, you know, here in Clinton Township and a resident at large to, to be a part of this.
I would suggest that we also add our finance director and our public services director, who is responsible for the physical parks footprint.
Sure. That's, we'd be part of the advisory, but if you, if we want to change the makeup of that, we certainly can, but Parks and Recs, seniors...
I would want them on as advisory.
Yeah, I believe that they're there already.
Further discussion. Sam, public participation on the agenda item.
On the agenda item, correct, always. As a resident who pays taxes, I don't want to go to the parks and see signs for businesses and such. There's always a danger when, you know, if somebody's going to market, you know, literally be, marketing is like selling off stuff. And to sell off the credentials of our parks and everything else to whoever has the money, I mean, there again, there's going to be, you know, there could be some very unsavory things. It's always dangerous to name anything after a person that's still alive because you don't know their full story till they're dead, and that's happened an awful lot.
That's true.
And I think that, you know, we could have a P. Diddy Park and we could have a vape park. I don't think, I don't...
Well, let's hope that Bob Kanan keeps his nose clean because we just named the building after him.
I've actually thought of that. I've thought of that with the goo thing still coming down the road to see what happened. But the, I just think it's a very bad idea to, to, to take any chance at putting signs up for marketers, you know, for sponsors of our parks, sponsors of our kids. We citizen, there again, even the committee is made up with all these other people and one resident, but two business people. If you look at the tax base of the, of the township, it's more residents than it is business. And I think that that, you know, it, it is the way this board has thought on almost everything, as always, it comes down to business, we owe it to the businesses. Well, I'm sorry, but I think you owe it to the residents. And I don't have to worry about the signs going up in my neighborhood because as I say, I live in the part of the township that has not one township park or one township facility. But it, it would gall me to go to one of these parks and see it represented by, you know, some car dealership that all of a sudden is out of power because, you know, everybody, you know, dislikes the owner. It's just ridiculous. I, I think it's a ridiculous thing to do to our parks.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion.
Uh-huh. Siri.
Not by her.
So you're Siri or... Okay. Further discussion, see none, roll call.
Trustee King.
Yes.
Trustee Matusak.
Yes.
Trustee Wade.
No.
Trustee Kress.
No.
Supervisor Gilliam.
Yes.
Treasury Aiello.
No.
Clerk Meltzer, no motion, fails.
Okay. That brings us to item number 23, request to establish the executive committee.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll support it.
Second?
I'll support it.
Okay. So, all right, so I'm sorry, who's making the motion? Kress or...
I made the motion.
I made the motion, and Ms. Aiello supported it, I think.
Kress and Aiello, maker and second.
Yep.
Further discussion, roll call.
Trustee Kress.
Yes.
Treasury Aiello.
Yes.
Trustee Wade.
Yes.
Trustee Matusak.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam.
Yes.
Trustee King.
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Item number 26, request to cancel Page Freezer social media auditing subscription. Ms. Meltzer.
I'm going to read really fast. Board of trustees, it has been since 2018 that the township contracted with Page Freezer, a social media audit software company that captures social media interaction in real time. At the time of initial contract, the purpose of the contract was to help law enforcement capture interactions that can help with addressing or solving cases. It was also purchased to help with the capture of interactions for FOIA requests. After discussions with our police department, I learned they are no longer using Page Freezer to capture social media posts. Now they can deal directly with Facebook, the social media site they use to interact with the public, to capture any posts needed to further investigations. In 2018, Facebook was not open to letting the police take this, this information. Also, since 2018, our social media sites are information-driven. The information attached to the media site will already be retained by each department, therefore there is no need for a third-party solution to capture posts. The expiration of the contract is April 1st, and I have already notice, given a notice of conditional cancellation. That's so that we could, if, if the board chooses to cancel, then, you know, we're, we're in line because you have to give 30 days. So please see the attached letters from the department directors that have affirmed they are no longer needing or using the Page Freezer solution. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Kim Meltzer. Also, you know what? There was also another part of this I wanted to add, and that was the issue of, there would be a $500 fee to capture, okay, you have it in there, to capture what they have already gotten. We can get that downloaded and exported. It was recommended by our IT department, and I, as the clerk, also recommend that because we have, whatever information that Page Freezer does have, I think we should keep that. They said it is likely going to be at a cost of $500.
How much are savings is that going to be...
The savings overall is, it's $1,800. We pay $1,800 a year for this service, so we no longer have that service.
Questions from the board. Do we have a motion?
I make, I make a motion to cancel the praise, Page Freezer contract and to authorize the spending of the $500 to export any of the data that they have.
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Matusak, supported by Treasury Aiello. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
No.
I know, it's tempting, I agree. Trustee Matusak.
It'd be faster, but we don't do it that way.
Trustee Matusak.
Yes.
Treasury Aiello.
Yes.
Trustee Wade.
Yes.
Trustee Kress.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam.
Yes.
Trustee King.
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay, public comment. Thank you, Captain. Sam.
Sam who?
Sam Bushell.
Speaking as a, a resident of the South End, and there again, I'd like to talk about the 15 Mile and Kelly Road area of the township, all the way down to 14 Mile and Kelly. We, if you drive down Grossbeck, it's not a very pretty sight, and then you get to Frazier at, at Kelly, and it changes. Well, at 15 Mile and Kelly, by where I live, and we've had some really bad things, you know, including the goo thing there, but you go to the Frazier side, and what have they had built in the last few years? They have a state-of-the-art meatpacking plant that just opened that made all the newspapers plus the TV stations because it is so large. It's also, it's brick or better. It's got all the setbacks, it's got the landscaping, it's got paved parking. You have a medical, on Kelly Road, you have a medical supply facility that's expanded now twice. It's massive, it's beautiful, it's got all the setbacks, it's got the landscaping, it's got the parking. You go just across Grossbeck, and you have a new brick industrial building, all brick, all paved, landscaped sidewalks, everything is there. And so the South End, being right there adjacent, literally, you know, you cross the street and just don't look across the street, it's a matter of, if we had some marketing for actually the property, you know, way back, in fact, when, at one time, we were supposed to be getting a engineering economic development director. In fact, Mr. Pearl, I think is still, if he is still here, that was one of his things, and it was shot down by the board. Well, I think that somehow somebody has totally sold the South End down the river. And the trouble is, and I, and I think I've finally gotten, made some, you know, headway with some of the people on the North End, once you guys approve these chain-link fences and, you know, garbage and dirt lots, once it's in the South End, there again, our attorney can tell you that these companies will then go to court, and they will use those approvals of yours to make it the standard. And that's how you just approved a site plan in the South End with, and literally it's on residential property, gravel lot, chain-link fence, right next to homes. And I, from what I understand, Velik Transportation has now gotten another extension, eight years down the pike from when they've done this, in court, in court, I guess it would be that, you know, I'm just understanding. And there again, we have a garbage dump. This board, there again, it's the prior members of the board, you know, they approved that chain-link fence for a six-month, you can only give six months for it, and it's still there, it's a wreck. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just saying, we are not garbage down there, and somehow Frazier and Sterling Heights and everybody else we, you know, we come across, they have all got real nice things going in, and we've got garbage. Why are you allowing it?
Thank you, Mr. Bushell. Bill Pollak. You guys are very patient because you've been here a long time to hear this comment.
My name's William Pollak, I live at 18658 South Nunley. I was here at the last board meeting, as you know, and I appreciate some of the follow-up I've gotten from some of the board members. I appreciate that highly from the people that have responded, and I still have some concerns about the project and the ongoing issues that we have. One being trash and debris from the contractors that they don't clean up. There's something I just saw today, there's one of the neighbor's driveway that is, they excavated, I think, to re, return her service to the water main, and part of her driveway is not supported because it was dug out and there's nothing there, all I see is water. I don't know how far it's not supported. Some of the ditches are in terrible repair. I have pictures, but unfortunately, this board meeting went on long enough that my phone died, so...
My computer as well.
Yeah, but I can send those to you if, if need be, but I would like to know what is the board's and what is the township's actions to get the restoration of our ditches of our road, the other issues that have been going on and everything that needs to be Any questions, any...
Well, so public participation is your opportunity to speak, but there's not a back and forth as part of public participation.
I'll give you a written, written response. All right, thank you.
But, but the response from last meeting is in my outbox, so, but I will certainly get in touch with you on these other issues.
All right, I appreciate it.
Okay.
I'll be sending you pictures as well.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, see no further public participation. Kim, anyone online?
So moved to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn is in order. Moved and supported, Ms. Meltzer.
You, you, you.
Thank you, sir. All right. See no further public participation. Kim, anyone online?
So moved to adjourn.
Moved and supported. Ms. Meltzer?
You, you, you.
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Matuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
No.
Trustee King?
Didn't bring snacks.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Motion passes. That's going on the record there.